We have one member, Mike Doyle, is not here. So I'll ask Gavin to please sit for Mike Doyle since he's in his chair. He's prepared and ready to go. Thank you. First order of business is the approval of minutes for the October 1st meeting. Anybody have any comments, questions, changes on that?
Dave, it's very minor, but I think it was line 65. There is an extra letter.
That's right.
You saw?
You, that's the one. I lost it. I couldn't, I knew there was one there, but.
Oh, yes. States.
Take out the D?
Stated. States.
States or stated, one or the other.
He stated.
That's it. Unless Bruce saw something else.
Line 87. Grover property is Grove property with no R. It's correctly spelled throughout the document except in that one location. With those changes, I would move approval for minutes.
A second.
Second. Any further changes or comments? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Five and one abstention, which is me. And nobody against. Okay. The first order of business is we have a consent item, application 1860. Do you have a motion to accept the consent item?
Was it approved by design review?
It was approved by design review.
Then I don't know that we have to do anything.
Yes, we need to approve it. I'm motioning that we approve the consent item agenda inclusive of application 1860.
No, here, second?
Second.
Okay.
Everybody.
In the consent, in the consent agendas, we are not allowed to ask questions. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay. Public hearings. Mr. Secretary, would you read the call for application 1838?
Application 1838 of Thomas R. Evans and Christopher J. Smith Esquire. Applicants for text amendment to Article 10, Section E dot three, off-street parking regulations regarding the location of parking areas.
Okay. Yes, would you explain what your.
Absolutely.
Application entails, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Ms. Hill and Madam Clerk. For the record, my name is Chris Smith. I am a Anius attorney and a partner at the law firm of shipping and goodwin. And I appear before you this evening on behalf of the owner applicant, Mr. Tom Evans. And specifically, we are appearing before you this evening concerning three applications, and I'll get to that in a moment, that would permit a liquor store retail use or packet store use of real property known as 132 Hot Meadow Street here in Simsbury. There are three applications, and they are somewhat related. His own text amendment arguably stands on its own. And I'm not sure, I know I spoke with your professional staff before about how you wanted to handle it, but if you would like to do the text amendment first, we can do that. I just, as a courtesy, I never like to do a text amendment without explaining how it could be applied since we're asking for the text amendment and it will be applied in our second application, which is a special exception application for the proposed use of the property. And then the third application is another special exception, which is to be able to increase the impervious surface as you provide in your regulations where you can, you can increase it up to a cap of 60 percent. So we do have those three applications that are all associated with the site development. However, I understand that you may want to take up the text amendment separately first. I do have a packet that I would put into the record. It does contain the zone text amendment, but it also contains the two special exception applications and some support documents that could just be incorporated into the subsequent hearing, hearings on the two special exception applications. But I just wanted to address that, how you would prefer that I handle, we handle it as a team. I will cover pretty much my responsibility as the zone text amendment, but if you want, we can, I can put the packet in, put all the notices in, and then I can address the text amendment first, and then we can go into the special exception after that. But it's totally your call, Mr. Chairman and the Commission, and I just wanted to say that at the outset.
They're a separate application, so I think.
Okay. So at the outset, what I would like to do is just as a housekeeping matter, I did send notices out to the water companies and DPH as required for all three applications. I have the green cards and the letters that I sent out way back in July. And thank you for the continuances that you've afforded so that we could take up the three applications, even if they're going to be somewhat separate in one night of hearing as we're doing tonight. So I do have this to put into the record with permission of the Chair. It's just, again, the copies of the letters and.
Yep. Excuse me. Robin, you haven't seen that yet?
No, these are just the letters and the receipts that went out.
Okay.
It's just, you have to notify, if you're within a, if you're in a public watershed area designated on a map, then theories and file in the town clerk's office, and they never are, you're supposed to notify the water company whose watershed it is, ENDPH of the filing or whatever the application is. In this case, I did get a call from Aquarian. Brian Roach, who used to collect all these, is retired. His replacement, I think it's Joe Welsh, is on top of these things. And he called me about another application that I have a hearing on tomorrow, and I have another text amendment down in Derby. But they just, it's just required. We don't go and look at the town clerk's office for maps because invariably they're never there. So consequently, we just find out who all the water companies are in town, in DPH. And Lauren Mathieu, they send it over to her at DPH, and we just send them out for every application, just so that we have compliance with the statute. I very rarely have had anybody even call me about it. So Mr. Welsh was the first one in maybe 20 years. I've been doing this for 35 years, but generally, you never hear from anybody. So that's all that is, Mr. Chairman. It's nothing, and members of the Commission, it's nothing new. It's just a copy of the application. And I think it's under eight dash three I of the general statutes. So we do have a text amendment. With the permission of the Chair, I do have a packet that I could just put into the record that would assist me in the presentation that I have this evening on the text amendment, and then also with our consulting team on the balance of the other two applications for the use itself. So with permission of the Chair, if I can just put that in.
Oops, sorry. Sorry. Thank you. I wonder if, oh, no, most of it's already in the, it's already part of your file anyways. Now, is this material that we've already, do you see?
Most of that is, or it's your POCD. And I'm going to walk you through that very quickly right now, what everything is. I think once I've gone through the text amendment, you'll have an idea why everything's here. So Exhibit A in the packet is simply a copy of the application for the text amendment. Exhibit B is the proposed text amendment. Exhibit C are excerpts from your plan of conservation and development 2017. Exhibit D is just the two applications for the special exceptions. This is really for your convenience. Exhibit E is an aerial of the subject property that our engineer from Anchor will be utilizing the full size on a board. So I just would, we'd like to have, you have copies of whatever we're going to be referring to if we can. And Exhibit F are the revised plans as of October 1. And there were some revisions. And Merrick Kenter will walk you through those from Anchor Engineering as to what those changes were in response to a interdepartmental staff, staff report that we received from your staff that dated September 25th, I believe. And Exhibit F, reduced copy again of those plans. And Exhibit G are just resumes of the consultants that we'll be hearing from tonight. Just to introduce the members of the team, they won't be addressing the zone text amendment, but with us this evening, we have Mr. Tom Evans, the owner of the property and the applicant. We have Merrick Kemmett, who will, he's our professional engineer and licensed surveyor from Anchor Engineering out of Glastonbury. Architect Dale Cutler, you'll be hearing from with the special exception applications as well. And then our traffic engineer, Scott Hesketh, who will address the traffic issues associated with the proposed use, which again, is not involved with the text amendment. So I'm going to, I'll focus on the text amendment. And I would respectfully refer the Commission to Exhibit B in the packet. Just walk you through the proposed text amendment. Exhibit B, the top portion is the existing language that you have. And again, this deals with your special regulations, your off-street parking regulations as they pertain to parking areas and associated driveways within setbacks. And if you look at the existing, and I'd just like to walk through the existing and then just roll right into the sentence that we're proposing to add. The existing provides that parking spaces in circulation drives shall not be located within 25 feet of the front property line or within 15 feet of the side property line or within 10 of the rear property line. So that just applies blanket across any uses in any of your zones in your regulations. Your regulations as they exist today provide that the zoning commission, next sentence, may reduce the side yard parking setback by five feet and require additional landscaping if you want to. So in your own regulations, you provide yourself the ability to reduce the side yard parking across the board by five feet when dealing just with parking and/or driveways. However, in the next sentence, this is, this is what we're focusing on with the text amendment, the current regulations provide where parking areas abut a residential zone, parking spaces in circulation drives shall not be located within the front, rear, or side yards. So if you have a B1 zone and the side yard setback is 20, then you have to meet 20, even though your provision up above provides for 15 because it abuts a residential zone. So we, working with Mr. Glidden in particular and Ms. Newton, we met with your professional staff, and we discussed the ability in limited situations when you have a business or commercial zone property, the ability for the commission, the ability in the regulations provision that the, this additional requirement, when you're adjacent to a residential zone, would not apply. And we were advised, and looking at our particular situation, there's a multifamily property next to us that's zone AZ, which doesn't exist anymore, that zone district. And there is essentially a long accessway adjacent to us. So in working with the professional staff and Mike Glidden in particular, Mr. Glidden came up with, we came up with the proposal that, and if you drop down to propose, the last sentence in italics is what this text amendment is about. And it provides, quote, "This additional setback requirement, dealing with residential zones, does not apply to a business zone property adjacent to an AZ multifamily zone property," which again, they don't exist anymore. You have, I think, six where there had been approvals, but you no longer have that zone district in your, in your, on your zone map in the sense of being new, where anybody can come in with something new. Where the closest dwelling on the AZ property, AZ zone property is at least 250 feet away from the business zone property's nearest property line. So in other words, if you have a business zone property and it's adjacent to an AZ, which is residential, then you don't have to provide for this additional setback for your parking and driveway. So it would be an exception for that. And it would apply to all the setbacks relative to a property in a B1 zone. So we're, in a B1, in a B zone, it's tough in a vacuum without the. In a B1 zone, your zoning regulations provide that there's a front yard setback. And now, if you want to compare this to what your regulations say for, just up at the, your existing regulations, the first sentence, in a B1 zone, the front is 25, the side is 20. We're here, it talks about 15 in your current regulations. And then the rear is 25. So under your current regulations, if we have a B1 zone property, the setbacks that you can, if you would have applied to an application for a driveway and parking area would be what's in that first sentence of your existing regulations. Right? If the B1 property, if any portion, if a portion of it abuts a residential zone, such as the side, then you can't use the 15 feet that your regulations provide for. You have to use the 20, which is in the regulations for the underlying zone. So what, and if it wasn't adjacent to a residential zone, even though it has 20 for the B1 zone, under your regulation, if it exists, if it did not abut a residential zone, someone could come in and ask for you to reduce it from 20 to 15 under the first two sentences of your existing regulations. Your next sentence says if it abuts a residential zone, then that section, that side, whatever it is that abuts, would have to meet this additional requirement. And we'd have to go to 20 instead of 15. So this regulation would exempt those properties from that requirement. Another way to address it, and one of the things that I talked about with your, with your town planner, was we're, we're really looking for the side yard, which is what you have up above for the exemption, right? There's a little cutout for side yards. And I said, by applying with this broad, where there's not even discretion to the commission, just automatic, that's what's proposed. If the commission wanted to, they could say, well, wait a minute, we're going to apply the same test to it as already exists for the first section. In other words, you at the discretion of providing for a reduction of the side yard up to five feet. So it would mirror the second sentence in your existing. And that would essentially provide the relief that we're looking for. And because what's proposed is broader, and you would be doing something more restrictive, you don't have to go out and renotice. So we asked for something that was a little broader, with the thought that the commission might want to pull it back. But if we asked for something too small, too restricted, and the commission wanted to expand it, then we'd have to go back and start all over again. So we asked for the broad, whenever you have this situation, you don't have to add these additional setbacks. You can just go with what's in the first sentence of your regulation, or, I'm sorry, you would be able to go with what's in the first section of your regulations. And if you weren't comfortable with that, and you wanted the same discretion that you have in your existing regulation, where you have the ability to reduce the side yard by five, then you could basically mirror that same thing. You could modify what's being proposed, and we would, and that would be fine with us. So in working with professional staff, we asked for a little bit more, because if you wanted to approve that, you could. But if you wanted to pull back, we could do that all within the framework of the existing application without having to renotice because it's more restrictive. If you made it, you know, broader, then we would have to renotice it because the average citizen, you know, suddenly, it's like, well, there's, there's more than it was originally published on. So, so that's why it's set up that way. And you could approve it as proposed, and that would be fine with us. But if you did want to pull it back, so that it mirrored that second sentence in your existing regulation, where the zoning commission may reduce the side parking setback by five feet, then when you have a B1 property, B1 zone property, and it's a 20-foot side yard setback, when you have an AZ zone and the nearest dwelling is 250 feet away, almost a football field away, you have the ability of reducing that 20 to 15, just as you would if you weren't adjacent to a residential zone. I don't know if that's clear. Hopefully, it is, but.
I'm surprised that you apparently gave up so easily on the, you know, any joint in the assertion that AZ is a residential zone. I mean, my history here, residential zones are identified with an R. Unmistakable. Everybody knows that. And when the AZ was eliminated, it's, I believe that it wasn't intended to be treated as a residential zone, and I wouldn't be, have proposed a zone, a text amendment. But I'm not Mike. I'm just sitting here listening to your explanation, and I think there's a better case to be made to just go forward with the language that's here. No text amendment needed. AZ is not a residential zone. And consequently, you're all set.
That would, that would be great.
Your site plan is consistent with the existing regulation. Let's move on.
And that would be fine if everybody agrees with that. That's great. And again, I didn't want to say that I was giving up. It's, you have a hearing, and if you close it, and then you go into discussion, and somebody says, well, jeez, maybe if we did it this other way. So it was like, well, because when I looked at this, I thought, well, jeez, you know, if we just had the same language and called out this multifamily that doesn't exist anymore, and we use the same language that's already there for the beginning part, I said, that would work for us. But in discussing it, it was from just a, you know, common sense strategic standpoint, it's like, you know what, make it broader, because the commission can always pull back on it. If we make it smaller, and somebody says, jeez, we think, why would it apply anyways? These zones don't exist. Just, we'll leave it the way that it's proposed. And then I wouldn't be, you know, then I'd be stuck where we'd have to renotice and stroll over again, and Mr. Evans wouldn't be very happy with me if that happens, so.
If there's no, if there's a determination, no text amendment is needed, that the site plan as it's submitted, that we're going to look at at some point, is consistent with the current regulation.
So Bruce, why don't we go to Robin and ask her?
I have another question first.
Okay.
What's your vision of how things would unfold if the AZ zone wanted to expand and add some more structures on the property within that 250-foot dimension, if it disappeared and became 150 feet?
Well, right now, I suppose if they, they'd be a nonconformity now, so I don't think, because it's a nonconformity, I don't think they can expand it without a use variance or a text amendment.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, folks that go to the Wesling program every couple of years, my topic's nonconformities, but I think that they wouldn't be able to do that. But even if they did, and you had already approved something for a B1 property so they could go, bring a total of additional five feet, but it could be very important on a specific property, if you went to that five feet, then they would be vested in, they would be okay. It's just that somebody else down the road, if they wanted to do something, they would have to abide by this regulation if it was an AZ property next door. But technically, AZ zone district that doesn't exist anymore, everything that's approved right now is valid nonconformity because it was approved way back when and the zone doesn't exist anymore. So arguably, they're going to be able to expand and do anything without a use variance or a text amendment, you know, for a previous.
Right, they'd be here, just as you are, they'd be here. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Donna?
I'm after AZ, but I'm a little hesitant to put, if it's nonexistent anymore, and it's going into our zoning regs, it's kind of an oddity to me, rather specific to something that isn't really relevant.
Okay.
My only comment.
Kevin? Kevin? Jackie?
I've got a couple of questions. Do they need the text amendment?
So while AZ is the, I'll call it key symbol that we use on our zoning map, it by far is a residential use. I don't know how you get around the fact that it's a residential use. I guess it could be semantics. If you say residential zone, I would probably have to pull the regulations when the apartment zone existed and see how it was defined. I'm guessing, and it would be just a professional guess, that you would see the word residential in there. So that may be just a play on semantics for what we're talking about. And we could definitely do that. I'm not really sure when the apartment zone went out, but we do have all the old zoning regulations available to us to do that. The AZ zone does exist on our zoning map because they were legal at the time of the adoption. No, they cannot be expanded. And we keep them on there so that if someone were to come in, or like, we get attorneys all the time that will ask for zoning compliance letters, we pull out those old regulations and we give them compliance letters based on the regulations that were in place at the time. So that's why they stay on there. And we do have a few AZ zones. So this, the way this is written, it wouldn't necessarily apply just to this property because actually quite a few of the AZ zones do abut business zones. So it has the potential to apply to other properties throughout town.
So that would be, because we are putting in new regulations, this would be the best wording of it, is AZ right now?
It's very specific to the zone that's next to them, but it is not site-specific, so to speak, because there are other AZ zones that abut business zones throughout town.
Okay. So, thank you.
Julie, you got any?
No, I mean, you know, the concern would be now with this, this AZ that doesn't exist anymore, you know, we plug it into this, this regulation, and then from what Robin is saying, there's other AZ zones that exist within town. And, you know, I mean, unless, unless I'm off base here, then wouldn't this reg then apply to all of those? And then.
Yeah.
Changes those businesses could make, we'd be hamstrung at the point because we've put this regulation in. I mean, I, I just think it seems broad to me. I mean, just, just from what I'm hearing here, my, my concern then becomes, back to Bruce's question, which is AZ is, you know, you're talking about going back in time and attorneys come and pulling up AZ regs to, you know. And I, I mean, I get it, I mean, you know, properties, you know, they change, they go along. But my concern would be that this regulation, if it's, if it is approved by the commission, would then apply to any business next to any AZ zone.
It would.
As opposed to being site-specific, as you said.
It would, yeah.
So, I mean, that's only, I'm just sharing a concern. I really don't have a question, but that's my concern.
Okay. Anybody in the public would like to speak to this?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just was going to just really respond and then just walk you through the POCD real quick. Because as you know, for a text amendment or a zone change, the standard review is, one, is it consistent with your comprehensive plan? If your comprehensive plan consists of your zoning regulations and your zone map, whether it's consistent with your POCD in ways it's going to adversely affect the public health safety. And.
Chris, excuse me, Chris.
Yeah?
Did the planning commission give us a referral?
Yes, they did. Yeah, you have a positive referral from the planning commission.
Which means it's consistent with the POCD.
It's consistent with the POCD.
So it's, you've passed that point.
So then, but it's, it's in, it's in the record, and if you want to indulge yourselves and read through it.
Thank you.
And for the gentleman at the end who made reference to being hamstrung, that's why I'm working with professional staff, you know, the, you could approve this whereby it mirrors that second sentence in your existing, where you can, it would be on a case-by-case basis, you would look at it and you would decide. Because right now, in your regulations, anything that's not adjacent to a residential zone, you can reduce, it has that general setback requirement for parking, and you have the ability to reduce the side yard, I'm sure it was called out for somebody, by five feet. And we're just saying, suggesting that if you wanted to, you could modify this if you were just concerned, because it would apply to any, any non-residential zone property next to any of these AZ zones throughout the town. But if you had that discretion, the ability to decide whether it should be reduced or not, then it would be on a case-by-case basis. And somebody who had a special exception or another use permit would have to come in and explain to you why they would like to reduce the 20 if it's a B1 property to 15. They would have to justify it to you. But anyways, so I just wanted to, to point that out in the standard of review. And you're running under eight, eight-three, eight dash three A referral to planning. You did receive a favorable recommendation from them. And just to paraphrase what's in your, what's in your POCD without reading through the different provisions, you do have quite a bit of, you'd like to promote from the citizens, and it's incorporating your POCD, we'd like to promote business, we'd like to have, you know, economic development. And providing this flexibility with side yard setback with a business zone on a small, in a business zone, for example, on a small piece of property, it does provide the commission and the owner with some flexibility in interpreting and applying the regulations as they're limited to parking and driveways and the associated driveways.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more question.
Thank you. Got another question?
So am I to understand if we were to mirror that sentence, may reduce by five feet, that would accomplish what you're?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's, that's good.
Well, but I just want to make sure. development, and providing this flexibility with side yard setback with a business zone on a small, in a business zone, for example, on a small piece of property, it does provide the commission and the owner with some flexibility in interpreting and applying the regulations as they're limited to parking and driveways and the associated driveways.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more question.
Thank you. Got another question?
So am I to understand, if we were to mirror that sentence, may reduce by five feet, that would accomplish what you're?
Yes, ma'am, so.
That's, that's, that's good.
Well, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear that if, you know, the additional setback requirement, when it's adjacent to the AZ, I would suggest that you leave that in there, and the 200-feet distance from a dwelling may be reduced, the setback may be reduced by five feet. You know, you might as well have all those in there that would, so it would apply to that situation, if, if there was a concern about it applying throughout the other property in the town. But yes, that would be fine. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anyone in the public like to speak to this application? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I have almost no voice. Do you want my name and address? Robert Hafner, H-A-F-N-E-R, 126 Hot Meadow, Unit 1A. As I read in the public notice, the text amendment to Article 10 regarding the location of parking areas, it does not specify 132 Hot Meadow, so would it apply to all parking, public parking areas in the town of Simsbury? Are you making that change for all public areas?
This isn't a debate, I'm sorry. You can make a comment about it, but...
I can't hear you, sir, I'm sorry.
We do not answer questions, you're allowed to make comments on the application.
Do you want a question? Does this apply to all parking areas, public parking areas in the town of Simsbury?
Do you understand, we do not answer questions in the public here, this commission is not in a debate with the public. What we're asking you to do is to look at the proposal and make your comments as to whether it's positive, negative, in your view, and why.
Well, as I say, the fact that it doesn't say 132 Hot Meadow in number one public hearing, that I'm concerned that it might apply to all parking, public parking areas now and in the future in Simsbury. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Sorry, I didn't mean to be abrupt. Go ahead.
Deborah Bishop, 126 Hot Meadow Street, 6A. I also agree with Robert here that this would apply to all parking areas in Simsbury that are adjacent to residential zones, my understanding of this, this text amendment, not just multifamily housing or whatever you're calling, are, are the one adjacent to 132. We live at Talke Acres, Talke Acres is a condominium complex. I feel it's residential. To me, it's, it's not a business, it's my home, it's, we have individual units, we own them, they're not apartments, they're townhouses. So to me, that would be residential. I don't know what else you could call it. Maybe it's obsolete now as a name for it, AZ may be obsolete, but we're still residential. And I don't see in this change in the text amendment, you're talking about giving some benefit because the house is further back, further away from the property line than the residential home is a certain distance away from the property line of the business. And I don't see how that really makes a difference. I mean, we, we have a driveway, we use our driveway, we have children that go to the end of the driveway, and there's a bus stop there, so I'm not really sure why, I mean, why does it matter that the dwelling is a certain distance away? Seems to me that we have a right to use all of our property, not just, not be just concerned about our dwelling being a certain distance away from a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this application? Okay, just anybody here?
I, I do have a question.
Okay.
But it's, again, more for Robin. Is there a way to restate this? So is more of a minimal, or minimizing the distance instead of it being so broad?
You guys can reword it to however you feel comfortable. They did it, as Chris said, they did it in a very broad way, so that you guys could reduce kind of the verbiage that's in here to whatever you're comfortable with. If it was more specific, then they wouldn't be able to do that, we would have had to basically withdraw this application, and then they would have to come back with that language. So if there's something that you guys would feel more comfortable with, you can certainly propose that and discuss it with the applicant or their attorney as to whether or not that's what works for them and they want you to vote on. You have that option.
Can I just, just point one thing, just to the comment, but I think it's important to emphasize that this provision applies in one situation, and that's where you have a business zone property next to an AZ zone property, where the closest dwelling on the AZ property is 250 feet away from the closest property line of the B, the business zone property. So it doesn't take anything away from the AZ property, it's just basically saying that from an added protection standpoint, which I think is the basis typically for this type of a regulation to begin with, the existing one, where you say, you know, when it's residential, whatever the underlying zone is, that it doesn't, it's not really necessary when the closest dwelling is 250 feet away. So you could be able to reduce it, or it would go back to what's already provided in the top of your regulations with those, the first sentence. And again, if you wanted to, you could say, you know what, we have that situation, we want it even more limiting, for whatever reason, I mean, I think that's pretty limiting to when it applies, and then say that it would apply to the side yard setback, it can be five feet, just as it is in the sentence, the second sentence in the reg, and we would not, certainly not object to that. But then it's even more limiting as to when that can even happen. So I just, it's not like, it's not going to be happening to all the public parking spaces throughout the town, I just wanted to clarify that, because I know you don't answer, that's my job is to do that, and also to respond to your question. I mean, it's not a carte blanche, jeez, this is everywhere, pretty limited situation, and again, what we're looking for really is the same relief that's already provided over these other zones, just the five feet for the setback, side yard setback.
Okay.
So anyways, I think you have my point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One more chance, anybody in the, yes, ma'am?
Thank you. My name is Judy Rabinowitz. I live at 126 Hot Meadow Street, Unit 3B, and I may be splitting hairs here out of some ignorance about the zoning regulations, but I'm very unclear as to why this particular change is being proposed to only apply to where a business zone property abuts an AZ zone property. I think, I request that the commission view it more in terms of a business property abutting a residential property of any residential zoning, and consider what that would mean for the town and for other locations in the town. Of course, I'm very defensive about my location, but I would like to see it viewed from the point of view of protecting the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Judy, can you please spell your last name for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, any other comments or questions? Is there a motion to close this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing for application 1838.
Second.
Comments?
Donna's second.
Second.
Yes, Donna's second. Questions or comments?
Is there a way to reword this?
You can reword it and, or we consider it. As long as we make it more narrow.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carry six, nothing. This public hearing is closed. Mr. Secretary.
Application 1849 of Christopher J. Smith, Esquire Agent, Thomas R. Evans, owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Simsbury zoning regulations for liquor permit for a package store in the property located at 132 Hot Meadow Street, Section F-18, Block 154, Lot 006, Zone B1.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir. Again, good evening, everyone. This application is a special exception for a use, and as indicated in the public notice, it's for liquor permit for a package store. You have to identify in your regulations, as you're well aware, the type of permit that would be obtained on the subject property known as 132 Hot Meadow Street. And in the packets that have already submitted, the second half would apply to this public hearing. And again, just very quickly, exhibit D, just for the record, is a copy of the two applications, this one, and then the next one dealing with impervious surface, which we'll probably discuss a little bit, our engineer will probably touch upon that when he's doing the overall use, when he's explaining that. And again, then we have the aerial, exhibit E, we reduce copies of the revised plans as of October 1, incorporating, I think our engineer will walk you through the changes, the comments from your interdepartmental review from September 25. There was a more recent report that was received from your town engineer that I received Friday afternoon, I did forward it on to our engineer who was not in the office on Friday, was out for the day and didn't see it until today, but he can address some of those comments from the engineer during his presentation relative to the, to the use. And the proposed use does, the, the actual, you know, proposal does involve a slight increase with the impervious surface that's permitted under your zoning regulations, but I'll, I'll defer to, to our engineer who will walk you through the proposed use as planned for the, for the property.
That's, no, Mr. Chairman, that's not this application.
Right.
Okay.
You know, wasn't, my understanding when you do this special exception, because in your regulations, it says that you have to file a site plan with this application, so that's what we did. Here I have it. I'm not quite sure how you would do it absent it, but if you, absent some sort of idea on what's being proposed, because it's a use for the property, but if you go to your, your regulations, and it's actually, here with me, just going to refer to the legal notice, Article 10, Section H, and it's actually subsection 5, it does state that, quote, "All applications submitted under this section for this use shall be accompanied by a site plan prepared in accordance with Article 5, Section J. All applications must state specifically what class of permit will be applied for to the Department of Liquor Control."
Sorry.
So, you know, we think if I'm looking at a use, special permit, special exception, whatever use, and it says you have to file a special.
I think what she was referring to is the engineer's discussion of drainage and the other things that are going to be in the...
That's the other application.
And the other application, so.
Just trying to keep them separate.
We're trying to keep them separate, we've taken 45 minutes to get partway through.
We're going to, we're going to...
We're going to be here till Calis go home.
Got it, I just didn't get that. So, so what we'll do is walk you through the specifics relative to the use of the property and how it would be utilized, without getting into the specifics such as stormwater runoff, which would be more applicable to the site plan, but access, traffic, architectural, as far as what something might look like on the, on the property, we'll address all those issues within the framework of the special exception, but stay away from those technical engineering components that they save with in for the impervious, for the site plan.
Thank you.
So, having said that, Eric. Hey, thank you.
Forgive me, I was, I'm prepared to do it, you know, breaking this up just so I can do one big presentation for everything. For the record, my name is Merrick Kement, professional engineer, licensed, I'll answer there with Anchor Engineering in Glassonberry, Connecticut. Formerly, prior to working at Anchor, I used to work for and at one point owned Sanderson Washburn, which was a local surveying and engineering outfit here in Simsbury. So I bring that to your attention because I am familiar with the zoning regulations of this town, and in essence, this is, you know, kind of my second home, so I know all these streets and very familiar. So, basically, the application is, is 132 Hot Meadow Street. It is north of Talke Acres, this is Talke Acres Development, and just south of the Yvonne Barber Shop Inn, also I believe the Dunkin' Donuts is in that location there. The plains, I think one did, I'm either. Forgive me. The property is, is about a half acre size, located on the east side of Hot Meadow Street and in a B1 business zone.
Eric, you know, we do have to demonstrate how the, it's appropriate for the property, so explaining the conceptual without getting into the real details with the engineering, with runoff, for example, I think would be important.
Yeah, I'm not going to get into those details, but I'm just trying to give you a quick layout of, you know, what, what the site is and what we're dealing with. So basically, this, this is going to be the proposed building and use for this application. Access will be directly off of Hot Meadow Street, accessing along the side, or the south side of the building to the rear of the property, which is where the parking, the loading, and the dumpster is located. We have, well, I have to ask you, how, how do I go into detail for the impervious and all that? That's the second application.
That's the next application as special exception, so I think we'll just hold off on that if we will, to them. Yes?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, honestly, most of it is, is related to, to design aspects of this, as far as the package store itself or this particular use, I don't know how you would want me to address that.
I think, address it as you would. I think we just heard that, like, with impervious, because that really is a separate application, deal with the impervious, you have a board with it, this is it, I think we have to look for an explanation as to building, what's being done with the building, how would this work if we're asking for a use approval. So I think everything that you would normally do, do.
Just don't go into detail of numbers.
I think if, if we're straining too far into the next application, my experience with this commission is...
Write me back. Okay. Thank you. So basically, right now, there's an existing structure, it's about 950 square feet, we are proposing a little over 2,800 square foot building.
Twenty-five.
We have looked into the parking regulations, and, and we are required to have 19 parking spaces for this site, which includes one handicap space. The orientation is adequate for safe maneuverability for passenger cars in the rear of the property, as well as having loading trucks or garbage trucks access, access the property and safely be able to turn around so they can drive out of Hot Meadow Street instead of backing out onto the main road. The storm drainage, we'll get into numbers, but basically, we are, since we are increasing the impervious area by, by quite a bit, we do have to create some type of a detention area for this. So what we are proposing is actually some subsurface chambers to hold back the water, as well as having little detention areas in the rear of the property, as well as one in the front of the property, which will overflow into the state system. In addition to the, the storm drainage, I'll, I'll refer to in the next application, we are doing treatment of that water as well. We're not just taking the water and discharging it off-site, we're actually treating that water, retaining, getting, holding it back, and discharging it.
Could you just add a comment on where the discharge points are and where it's going?
Could you just add a comment on where the discharge points are and where it's going?
Yeah.
Ruth, can we hold that till the next application, please? We're discussing the appropriateness of this property for a package store use, and where things drain doesn't seem to me to be. I don't think.
Well, I'm trying to cover everything, but.
Okay.
I guess lighting is an issue here. We're also gonna be providing floor light bases and fixtures to illuminate the site. We have provided a photometric plan, which is part of the next application. The lights are gonna reflect adequate light cover for the site itself, as well as to be arranged so they're not gonna cause objectional glare or nuisances to anyone that is external to the premises. Landscaping is also being proposed for two specific reasons. One is for aesthetics of the property, as well as buffering and screening for the neighboring We will be using best management practices for the application of a package store in this area, which will include erosion control, as well as the treatment that I mentioned and vegetative cover. Chris mentioned comments related to the con engineer. Once again, those are design questions, which we're gonna be discussing in the next application. And with that, I think we can.
And I think Dale, Dale Culler's next to walk you through the actual use itself, its proposed property with the architecture and the floor plans.
I'm Dale Culler, I'm a registered architect, and I'm providing design services for Tom on this project. This is where we are now. If you can see that, this is the subject property right here, this is the existing building. It's about nine hundred and fifty square feet. It is a non-conforming building, it's too close to the property line. It's a building that's been vacant for, what, ten years now? And is really not a candidate for renovation. So, what we're proposing is a new building, approximately, it's actually twenty-five hundred square feet. And that building, floor plan of the building, again, orientation, Hot Meadow Street is out here, mark it on the side. It's a large sales area, and I think as people have stated, the intended use at the moment is a package store, but it is kind of a general use retail, single tenant retail. It could actually be a number of different things, but as I say, the current application of the use is as a package store. The, and architecturally, the building, what we're trying to do is we're trying to kind of continue the village theme that has been established, hope it doesn't fall, with the Dunkin' Donuts property, and we also did the Live Every Day building, the little yellow building next to Dunkin' Donuts, trying to keep that theme going, and really doing something that's a little bit larger in scale. But again, with those buildings like this building, what we're really trying to do is create a structure that really looks like a house that's been converted to a retail use. And that's, you know, that's kind of the general theme that we're pursuing in this particular, on this particular site. This is the elevation that's from the parking lot. It's also the view that you would get if you're heading north on Route ten. This is the view, again, from Hot Meadow Street. And again, breaking it down into a single-story element and going towards the neighborhood, which is a fairly small structure, so that's, you know, that's kind of the architectural technique that we're trying to do there. Similar, we did the same kind of thing with the Live Every Day building. But then, in general, is the building, the type that we're proposing.
You have a north elevation?
We have a north elevation. No.
That's where the entrance is, right?
No, actually, no.
It's on the south face.
Yeah, let's, let's breathe. North elevation would be there.
Yeah.
South elevation, this is where the entrance is.
Which is the, which is the entrance? What's the sidewalk on the north side, on the north side there?
The north side, that's just the, you know, that's actually the back of the store.
And where the dumpsters are gonna be, right?
The dumpsters are here.
A cooler and everything.
So, the entrance is here, the main visual that you'd see, you know, from Hot Meadow Street as you're heading north would be that elevation. That elevation.
Okay. Now, I'm just trying to figure out what that sidewalk was along the side of the north side.
Well, it's actually for delivery service walk.
Okay.
And again, going back to the floor plan, again, I think the intent of this is to be more a wine-centered package store, if you will, a higher-end kind of use. We have, we do have a small area with beer coolers over this location, but in general, it would be primarily a wine store.
If you have any questions, I think Scott with traffic.
Good evening. On record, my name is Scott Hesketh. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut, firm of F.A. Hesketh and Associates, the author of my September tenth, two thousand and eighteen letter, which has been submitted in support of this application. And please excuse me, I have a cold in the sore throat, so I'm gonna try to get through this as quickly as I can and try to be as understood as I can be with the limitations that I have tonight. We were asked to prepare a traffic impact report for this proposed use. In order to do that, we reviewed available data files, we looked at the Connecticut Department of Transportation's traffic volume counts, we looked at the previous counts that our office had done out on Route ten for the Cumberland Farms development when that was going in. We also reviewed the files of the town of Simsbury and the Office of the State Traffic Administration, and we obtained some traffic volume counts for the ridge at, the ridge at Talke, not, is it called, I believe? The residential development was going on the old Hartford property. According to the ConDOT counts from two thousand and thirteen, Route ten carries an average daily traffic volume of about twelve thousand nine hundred vehicles, morning peak hour of just under fifteen hundred vehicles, and an afternoon peak hour of just under fourteen hundred vehicles. In March two thousand and fourteen, our office did seven consecutive days of counts. We counted an ADT of just under eleven thousand, less than the ConDOT counts because the Hartford was much reduced use at that time. Morning peak hour of just under twelve hundred vehicles, and then afternoon peak hour of just under twelve hundred vehicles again. According to the data submitted for the ridge at Talke View, the ADT in September of two thousand and sixteen was ten thousand four hundred vehicles, AM peak hour of about eleven hundred, afternoon peak hour of about twelve hundred vehicles. That previous report projected traffic volumes to a design year of two thousand and nineteen, so we use their two thousand and nineteen combined traffic volumes as the background traffic volumes for our particular, our particular site. The copies of their training with diagrams are included in the appendix, and the two thousand and nineteen background traffic volumes we presented in our report as Figure Two. In order to generate the traffic volumes projected from the proposed use, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Report, it's a standard engineering reference, which allows engineers and land planners to predict the volume of traffic associated with proposed uses. The data in that report is based on actual traffic volume counts conducted at existing sites throughout the country. Engineers go out, they do traffic volume counts at a particular location, they send the information into the ITE, and the ITE calculates average trips, they make regression equations, so that if you're proposing a ten thousand square foot daycare center, you can, you can go through the tables, run the calculations, and project the volume of traffic for that particular use. So, we did that here for this particular store. As a proposed liquor store, the twenty-eight hundred, uh, twenty-five hundred square foot use would generate approximately fourteen new vehicle trips during the morning peak hour, approximately seventy-five new vehicle trips during the afternoon, and we projected seventy-five new trips during the Saturday peak hour. Half of those entering and half of them exiting the site. So, seventy-five, peak hour of seventy-five would be thirty-seven entering and thirty-seven, thirty-eight exiting movements. If this was a standard retail development, any retail use moving in based on the ITE uses, the numbers would be significantly less, approximately three during the morning peak hour, eleven during the afternoon peak hour, and fourteen trips during the Saturday peak hour. So, because this is a liquor store use, we're projecting those numbers. Any case, in the future, it turns over to another kind of retail use, the commission can be certain that the, that the analysis we presented is still valid. We projected the site-generated traffic volumes to the roadway network, assuming sixty percent of the traffic to and from the south, and forty percent to and from the north. Reason we did that is because left turns out is the most difficult movement to make. We chose sixty percent of our traffic exiting, making a left hand out to be conservative in nature. Figures three and four present the site-generated and combined traffic volumes based on that assumption. We ran capacity analysis calculations for the intersection of the proposed retail driveway. Based on those calculations, the northbound and southbound movements on Route ten will operate during a level, at a level service A during all peak hours, and the proposed site driveway approach would operate at a level service E during the morning peak hours, with an average delay of about thirty-seven seconds per vehicle, level service F in the afternoon, average delay of a hundred and six seconds per vehicle, and a level service C during the Saturday peak hours, with an average delay of about twenty-one seconds per vehicle. These levels of service are consistent with other retail uses up and down the Route ten corridor. It is a heavily traveled commuter roadway, and those numbers are typical for most driveways. Because we have the adjacent apartment units to the south of us, we projected traffic volumes for the existing apartment use driveway using the ITE data, and we looked at the background and combined traffic volumes, levels of service at that location, to see what the impacts our use would have on that location. Again, for the apartment driveway, the northbound and southbound approaches, again, operate at level service A during all peak hours. The apartment driveway approach during the morning peak hour is at a level service D, approximately thirty-five seconds of delay, and under the combined traffic movements, it'll be a level service E, again, thirty-five seconds of delay. The line between D and E is thirty-five seconds, so we go from thirty-four point eight seconds to thirty-five point two seconds of delay, so we just trip over that use, less than one second increase in delay. During the afternoon peak hour, the apartment driveway approach would be a level service E of forty-eight point eight seconds, and under the combined conditions, F, fifty-two point two. Again, we're right on the borderline, fifty seconds between E and F, so we slightly trip over from E to F, average delay of, average of about four seconds per vehicle on the approach. During the Saturday peak hours, the apartment driveway approach operates at level service C under both the background and combined traffic line conditions. So, based on that analysis, we believe that the site driveway operates at acceptable levels of service. We have minimal impacts on the adjacent driveways up and down Route ten. We've also looked at the driveway design. We're located approximately seventy-five feet from the apartment complex driveway. We do have exceptional site distances of that location in excess of six hundred feet in each direction, based on speed counts conducted out on Route ten during two thousand and fourteen. We'd be required to have, we would be required to have site distances of five hundred feet in one direction and four hundred and forty-five feet in the other direction, so the site distances are certainly more than adequate. We looked at the potential of needing a left turn lane at the site driveway location. Based on the Connecticut Department of Transportation's Highway Design Manual, it does suggest that you should look at it, consider it, but based on the through volume movements, but based on the projected volume of left turns into the facility, the Department of Transportation typically doesn't ask for a left turn lane until you hit in excess of thirty-five or fifty vehicles an hour making a left-hand turn. So, based on the projected volumes there, we would not propose a left turn lane. We believe that it'll operate at acceptable levels of service. So, based on our existing traffic volume counts, the projected traffic volumes, the proposed design, the adequate levels of service at the location, the availability of site distances, we believe that a liquor store use on this property is an appropriate use. And we will need an approval from the Department of Transportation for an encroachment permit in order to construct the driveway. Should this commission act favorably on this application, we'll be making an application to that agency for that, for that permit. And at this time, I'll turn it back over to Chris.
Thank you, Scott. Well done with the cold. Just a couple of points with the, I think the aerial, there's our aerial right here, and you have a reduced copy of this in your, in your packet that I submitted, but I think that the aerial, and I think you know the zone map, which is of course part of the proceeding, because it's part of your regulations, that you have a lot of business zone property all along Hot Meadow. I mean, we know that for a fact, I'm just stating this for the record relative to its consistency with the neighborhood. It's all B one, there's all business here, there's business over here, gas station, and the other retail in the immediate area in the office. So, this use, which is permitted on this property, subject to this review, but it's permitted in the property, I would respectfully submit that it is certainly consistent with the neighborhood. The architectural design is very similar, if not identical, to what is the therapeutic, which Dale has done, these other properties and whatnot. I mean, this whole New England theme, which is what we look for, you know, from a planning perspective in, in New England, I would respectfully submit that it's certainly consistent with the other buildings in the neighborhood, which is one of the things that you're supposed to, we're supposed to address for you when you're evaluating this proposed use. And as far as impact on adjacent properties, again, it's consistent with all the property, all the business zone along Hot Meadow, and with the now no longer existing AZ zone property to the rear of us, the condominiums, I would respectfully submit that the closest dwelling is two hundred and fifty feet, is at least two hundred and fifty feet away, which is where we came up with that number with the text amendment, so there's gonna be no adverse impact there. You have business, you have retail, much, much closer to those properties. We heard that traffic is not going to have an adverse impact. There's one second with one of the turning movements during one of the time periods, one of the time periods, and another one with an increase in four seconds, and I would rescind. We heard from Mr. Hesketh that it's not creating a safety issue there from traffic, which is one of the other considerations that we have to address. You only have nine percent of your properties, according to your P O C D at page fifteen, that's even zone, business, or industrial, so business is even less. So, obviously, this is where this commission has decided business should be in multifamily. It's not unusual to see business, retail, next to multifamily throughout town, throughout the entire state. That's how you typically see it. It's not a isolated area way in the back where you have two acre zone or, you know, go to Wilbur's four acre zone or something like that. As far as the use, Mr. Evans plans on operating this here, and he, he's developed all these other properties, as you know, along the way here, many of them, not all of them, many of them. I think he's, he's been good in developing a nice product. He plans on operating this as a family operation, he himself, and he sees a need for this here. And I did ask him if he could just, there had been historically, I think it's Lewis's Package Store, that had operated for a number of years in the immediate vicinity, I think maybe three properties down, and I asked Mr. Evans, now that's gone, and that's literally, it was, I think, three or four properties, I think it might have been over here, and just, just to the.
That's where John.
Right, right there.
Lewis's Grocery and Package Store, which is one forty-six, where John Ritson's one is.
So, that had been near for.
It's on the end of Ritson's building.
Yeah.
It's two-story office building, it was an attachment.
But there had been a package store use there for many.
It was attached to Ritson's building.
Detached.
Yeah, from nineteen fifty-four to the Louis.
It was a Louis, we're on there. So, I asked Mr. Evans if he would just generate, now liquor control, there are permits available. available because they're not all used here in Simsbury, and, um, more importantly, uh, Mr. Evans, uh, I asked him to develop, just on the zone map, where the other package stores are in town, and you'll see that there's a gap, so I'm going to turn it over to Tom because he's much better, he knows Simsbury inside and out, where things are part of it than I do.
Here's where the subject is, where, where I'm asking for it. In Simsbury, the next closest one is up, uh, Art's up, uh, five sixty-four Hot Meadows, or if you go south, you have to go into Avon, into Bravanti's Building down there. There's one over, uh, on Albany by Staples, and then, uh, going north, you're going to go West Street, out by the high school, uh, or Valley Liquors across from, uh, uh, Methodist Apostle Church over there, or you're, uh, or you're going to go up to, uh, the Wine House at thirteen fifty-six, or Town Line at sixteen ten, or out in Terracotta, uh, there's two hundred. But from, from, from the center of town down, where there used to be for over forty years, Lewis's Package Store, which, it, it seemed to be successful, I guess he sold out developers at Bridgeport Square or something, or whatever, or they never got built, or something, but, but, uh, that's, I read in one of the articles, but, um, down in this section of town, I, I've had this property for ten years, trying, with a sign out front, and on the internet, and on Loop Net, on CoStar, trying to advertise it for commercial development, and, and I haven't gotten cakers. And it's kind of like the Live Every Day Building next to the Dunkin' Donuts. Uh, when you build them, you kind of have to build it, otherwise, there's none. I, I have gotten a few phone calls from people looking for pizza restaurants and, of course, but nobody's looking for office anymore. You guys, everybody wants office on Hot Meadow Street. They just, they, a year and a half ago, they auctioned off one of the hot metal, what, five hundred and thirty-five thousand for a twelve thousand square foot office building? The land is worth four hundred. I mean, the, the, the eighty-eight Hot Meadow was foreclosed on a couple months ago, and the, the beautiful brick building there, they just tried to auction the one at Avon and park down there. Office buildings aren't the thing nowadays. People aren't looking for these smaller office buildings, um, as we know from the Hartford building, so. I'm trying to find uses that work on my properties, and, and, and service uses, like package stores, coffee shops, therapist work, uh, but the gas station has been a huge success through, even though there's some negative, it's been, there's three thousand members in this town a day that use it, so it's been a, it's been a big success, so.
But as far as a, a need, uh, you know, in, in the location, it's not being proposed near any of the other ones located in town, and we just wanted to make sure we made that point, and, and you have Tom explain, Mr. Evans explain, you know, his, his attempts over ten years to do something with this property, and this is something he's wanted to do, and he'd like to do it at this site, and he thinks it's going to work, so I think we've heard, um, sorry, go ahead.
Now we're shutting you up. Shut you too much.
No, it's.
The building, no matter what, if I open it up as a package store, and, and somebody says it doesn't work, I'll have a beautiful building, the colonial Sturbridge Village looking building that Dale designed, and it'll be here long, long gone, and it'll be something to be proud of, so. And, and he builds buildings. The, the Live Every Day Building was originally built for, for Subway sandwiches, when I originally built that, and then the Hartford closed, and then it backed out. So Live Every Day went in there, and they love it, so. The buildings Dale designs have multiple purposes down the road if, if, if something doesn't work, and that's kind of what I'm trying to do. Nice addition to that, well, delicious.
Okay. So thank you very, and I don't know if you have any questions, but just respectfully submit that, uh, that the criteria that, uh, for us to present to you, I would respectfully submit that there, there is, we're not proposing this next to another package store anywhere near in the immediate vicinity. The existing future character of the neighborhood with its own, what has been used historically, I respectfully submit this is not inconsistent with it, it's permitted under your rights. You've heard about traffic, and as far as any adverse impacts to the businesses and retail, I don't know how they would have any, this would have any adverse impact to it in relative to the multifamily in the rear. Again, we're almost a football field in the closest dwelling, and, uh, it is a retail use, it is a package store use, uh, on this property as permitted, and it's, again, it's not in close proximity. We have, again, B, a business zone, I believe, property to the rear of us, uh, that's in this area right here, and would respectfully submit that, uh, that we do comply with the criteria under the, under your regulations, and would respectfully request that you approve the special exception for the proposed use. Thank you.
Okay, questions from the commission? Let's start at the left.
I'm, I'm processing, I may, I may have some.
Okay, he takes a.
I don't have a question on this.
Okay.
Evan? The, um, the additional B1 property in there that you mentioned, is that, who, who's the owner there, and how large is that?
It's John Ritson, it wraps around back, that's, that was part of the apartment approval for the King's, yeah, it's, it's, it's basically a wetlands back, I think.
Okay, so it's not available. And then, could you show us the site plan, and how close, if, if we didn't do the amendment? How, I'm taking advantage of that amendment, how close are you to the new line here, to the, to the neighboring line?
If you look at the, uh, in the package, you can reduce copy of these plans, which we'll be addressing more particularly as far as impervious surface and stormwater shortly, uh, maybe not shortly, but, uh, right here is the fifteen-foot.
What about back where the parking is?
That's ten because this is business zone, so it would not apply, that, it would be the ten feet, uh, that you have in your regulation.
But it's fifteen on the side, at the parking, it's fifteen on with that.
Which would be twenty.
You're five feet over right now.
Yeah, the ten feet, that's, that's the relief, so.
Five feet.
With the text amendment.
I didn't know if you used the whole.
That's, that's what, that's what I said, if there was going to be any restricted language, then that was, that's what we were looking for. Because again, that's the only.
It's to make the parking lot function properly, it's so it's not tight.
That's the site design that we'll address when we're.
That's perfect. Dylan?
No, I'm good.
Bruce?
I'm all set, thank you.
Really, to accommodate turnarounds and whatever, and you'll hear that next, that's, that's really why we have to push it out to that, uh, just that extra five feet, which would be applicable to it in the, the word B1 zone property next door.
Thank you. Okay, now, I think, we have some people who are interested in speaking. Please try not to repeat the prior comments, uh, just say that you agree with them or not. So, let's start with the gentleman in the back.
Thank you, uh, my name is Robert George, uh, one twenty-six Hot Meadow Street, Unit Three D. Impressive figures, uh, for sure, when it comes to traffic, but I have two concerns I just want the, the board to consider. In the morning, there's a ballet of traffic coming in and out of Dunkin' Donuts, Cumberland Farms, people trying to ride bikes and cross the, uh, the bike trail, uh, and, uh, in a two-lane Hot Meadow Street, which we love staying two-lane, we'd rather it not turn into forty-four. There's a lot going on there in the morning, buses stopping, uh, it, it is a ballet that I'm, I'm surprised that we haven't heard more crashes and, and difficulty. Hartford Current says we've added, we're adding almost seven hundred and sixty-five units of living, so I know the measurements there are very accurate, I'm sure, but, uh, when you consider the traffic pattern on Hot Meadow Street as it's developing towards Avon, um, we need help in terms of, if we try to get out in the morning, I think it takes more than thirty-five seconds, it's not that I'm timing it, but it's the danger of what's happening. There's a lot going on there that seems to be, uh, random, and people trying to get around each other, going in and out of Cumberland and Dunkin' Donuts and everything, they're speeding up actually as they head to the trail, and although there's those blinking lights, it is difficulty as well. And secondly, any package store, even if it's a, uh, mostly a wine store, is going to have returns, and so, as a community, uh, we'd rather not look down on, uh, bags of returnable bottles and cardboard boxes, so as you look at the design, I didn't, couldn't see much here, but certainly in terms of the, the returns and all the refuse that comes with, uh, you know, business in a, in a, in a bottled liquor store, that we wouldn't have to be looking at that as we exit. We've spent an awful lot of money trying to, uh, beautify our, our roadway, uh, so we would hope that some sort of, uh, shielding, fencing, uh, landscaping would help at least our sightline on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Judy?
Excuse me, I'll come through here, I just, oh, this is not the same one, okay, take this one down, okay. Judy Ripinowitz, Talka Acres, Unit Three B. One of the big issues here is, is there a need for a liquor store? I could not see Tom's, um, diagram from the back, but it seems to me a couple of places were missing from the list that he gave of existing package stores. There's Avon Wine and Spirits is one mile down the road, Lally's in Avon Village is one point seven miles, M and R Liquor Store is two point one miles, Argy's up in town is two point three miles, and there's at least another six or seven within a five-mile radius. Do we need another package store? I submit not. I would love to see something done with that building that's been abandoned for the number of years, it's not very sightly, um, but a package store might not be the most appropriate thing. I would like to point out, uh, well, I, I second what Robert said about the traffic issues, the statistics are all very well, but you need to watch what goes on there with all of the comings and goings, and people interacting with each other, um, it really gets interesting. Again, I couldn't see exactly what was being addressed as far as water runoff, and I mention it now because it's one of the factors that the commission is asked to pay attention to when granting an exception that is not part of a normal B1 use. And I'd like to point out that if this, if the back line of this lot, if the impervious covering goes too far back, we've got a pond in here that drains under the surface, back in between these buildings headed towards the river, and if there is additional runoff there, it could get very problematic, because with the heavy rains that we've been having, we have been having increased puddling back in here between the buildings, and I'm very concerned that it would only increase with additional runoff from impervious surface We've got a minor concern, but it is true that liquor stores can be targets for crime. The statistics are quite clear about more robberies taking place at liquor stores than in any other kinds of businesses, so we do have a, a concern about that and the fact that it would be so close to our property. And I thank you very much for listening, and hope you make good decisions.
Thank you. Yes, Ben?
Hi, my name's Carol Rappaport, it's R A P P A P O R T, and, um, I moved to Simsbury to Talka Acres, I'm one twenty-six Hot Meadow Street, Unit Seven G. I moved fifteen years ago because I worked for Hartford, and I wanted to move closer to the building in Simsbury, very sad to see it go, now I'm commuting to Hartford. But I also have concerns about the traffic. If you, at, many times during the day, I think the traffic now is almost worse than when the Hartford was there, um, and back in two thousand and fourteen is when they were really downsizing, selling off the businesses, and so there weren't as many people in that building when I think some of these traffic studies were done. But with the bike trail there, kids waiting for the buses in the morning, um, the extended hours that during the week, package stores can be open till nine P M now in the state, and they're open on Sundays, um, I just, I don't feel that that's a great use of that property, um, even though it's his right, I mean, it's a lovely looking building, but, um, I'm afraid of what's going to happen to our property values, um, you know, who wants to live next to a package store? I feel like it's, our area's getting, um, to be like Route Forty-four, which, um, but, you know, we, these are our homes, you know, we drive in and out of this driveway, and I'm also afraid of that driveway being so close. When people, um, put their turn signals on, you know, we don't know if they're turning into the package store, into Dunkin' Donuts, I mean, you know, it's, it's very risky getting out of there. I'm concerned about, you know, the runoff of the water with the snow removal, um, the delivery trucks, the noise, the lighting, um, you know, I just, I, I like the wellness building or whatever, that size, and, you know, it doesn't seem to generate that much traffic, but I'm really concerned about having the package store at the end of my driveway. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bob Hafner, again, one twenty-six Hot Meadow, One A. Two issues, and I'll be brief as I can. By my count, and I didn't want to get nabbed for distracted driving by the Simsbury P D, there are at least four liquor stores between one twenty-six Hot Meadow and the Grand B line, and there is another one one mile south of us, just over the Avon line. Do we need another liquor store, my question? The second one is the safety issue. Now, tonight at four fifteen, I was going to see my wife, who was a patient at the residence at Brookside in Avon, and it took me nine minutes to get out of Talka Acres, and the only way I got out is because someone hit the pedestrian crossing, and traffic stopped southbound, they kept coming northbound. It is impossible, from four to five-thirty, quarter-six, the traffic is tremendous, and to have another driveway so close to our access road is, I don't think is good safety. The gentleman with the safety, uh, the, uh, traffic counts gave us a lot of impressive numbers, and I'm sure it was well done, but the traffic, and what's going to happen when all that assisted living, and the old cornfield opens up, and all the apartments south of us are built, it's going to be a lot more traffic, and do we really need to add another driveway, another set of cars, in and out? So close, thank you.
Thank you.
I would also add one more thing, um, you know, that pool, pool barn across the way has no occupants in it at all that I can see now, all those little shops that are, it's all empty. I mean, if you want to do a package store, it seems to me you could put it over in the pool barn, you know, where that area was.
Anyone else want to speak to this application?
No, no. We're waiting.
Just the applicant, I think, wants to.
Pardon?
I think the applicant wants to speak.
Would you like to speak? Well, if, if everybody was done, that's just for rebuttal, I didn't want to interrupt.
This isn't a debate.
Well, I mean, the procedure, whatever. They give a name, I agree.
Do you have something you'd like to say?
Oh, the state of Connecticut limits how many, I mean, you guys are, you, you probably know that, the state of Connecticut determines how many liquor licenses for package stores are appropriate for each town, they limit that number, and in Simsbury, that number is nine. You have seven package stores in Simsbury. Most towns have maximized their package store limits, Simsbury's are unique, where they had two available, is, is what the state of, kind of, they told me today, but.
So, so good.
There is a, no, no, I'm just saying, there is a, there is a.
Okay. Yes?
Deborah Bishop, again, Hot Meadow Street. I also want to point out that we do have quite a few children in our complex now, and their bus stop is at the, right at, the end of the driveway at Hot Meadow Street, and it just doesn't seem quite appropriate to be having children within view of a package store, it just doesn't seem quite, quite right to me. And the other comment I want to make is that, um, just this past week, I was trying to get out of the driveway, and by coincidence, there was a, a truck coming out of the current driveway at, uh, at one thirty. driveway at 132. And I couldn't see at all to the north of us. And the proposed driveway is even closer to our driveway. So anything that's in that driveway is going to block our view to the north. Thank you.
Thank you. Going once? Okay. Commission members have any questions based on? Are we ready to close the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, regarding application 1849, I believe that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carrie, six, nothing. Okay.
Okay, application 1856.
Under the drainage.
Christopher J. Smith, Esquire, Agent Tom Evans, owner, for special exception for someone who Article 8, Section A, footnote A of the Simsbury zoning regulations, to increase coverage to 58.7% as provided by Article 8, fate and area requirements. Section A scope of requirements, footnote 8 on the property located at 132 Hot Meadow Street. Assessors map F18, Block 154, Block 006, Zone 1.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay.
Yes, sir. Again, good evening, everyone, and I would respectfully ask for the last one, Chris Smith, for the record, on behalf of the owner applicant, Mr. Tom Evans. And I would respectfully request that the handout of the material as well as the exhibits from the prior hearings be incorporated into this one, relative to this special exception application to permit the increase in impervious surface as it's 40% in the zone district. It can go up to 60, subject to a special exception approval, and which being proposed is at 58.7. And our engineer, Merrick, will be up in a moment to explain that site development with the site plan issues incorporated into that. We respectfully just prefer the commission to have the most revised plans as of October 1, reduced copies. Reduced copy of it is Exhibit F in the tab, and they were done in response to an interdepartmental memo, which I believe you have, that's dated September 25. Again, we did receive just on Friday afternoon from the town engineer some additional comments associated with drainage and stormwater that Mr. Kimmich can address while he's providing you with his presentation. So with permission of the chair, I'll turn over Mr. Kimmich. Okay, thank you.
Merrick Kimmich of Anchor Engineering. I apologize for before I was throwing a curveball. I swung, I missed, but I'm back at that.
Fairway.
All right. As Chris mentioned, the initial plans that were submitted were due August 24th of this year with a revision of October 1st, which incorporated a lot of items that were comments and concerns in the staff memo dated September 25. There were a numerous amount of questions, clarifications, and requests. And instead of going point by point, because I know we're limited on time tonight, most of those issues related to exactly what I said. They wanted, staff wanted additional notes, additional details added to the plan, clarifications regarding drainage and stormwater. A photometric plan was requested, which was added, and that is added as Sheet 4. So there's an additional sheet that was added because of all the additional requests from the town. To say that basically all of those items that were in that memo, I believe I discounted earlier today, there was about 60 comments or questions. Most of those were adequately addressed until we got the 11th hour additional comments, which I believe there was eight total. Once again, a lot of them are all housekeeping, and I will go through those at the end of this presentation. Basically, the existing site, as we've already gotten through, is roughly, there's an existing structure there of 950 feet. It is north adjacent to the Talka Acres property and south of Davon Barbertown, as we discussed. The property is a half acre and in the B1 zone. I would like to note that the existing structure right now is an existing non-conforming to the side yard, which is located on the north side of the property. As it stands right now, the building sits 7.9 feet from the property line in that location, but it does conform in all other locations, with respect to that. Now, with the proposed building that we're proposing, the initial footprint or portion is going to be within that existing footprint of what's there today. We are shifting it slightly away from the property line, so now the actual distance will be roughly 10 and 1/2 feet versus the 7.9 feet. And the remaining building will be wrapped around along the, going towards the rear end of the property with all aspects actually conforming to present zoning. Access for this, as mentioned earlier, we are proposing a 30-foot access off of Hot Meadow Street, which will be accessing on the south side of the proposed building to the rear parking lot, dumpster location, and loading areas. We are proposing a civil entrance into the site with two exit lanes. All of this will be discussed later by Stan Heskey. The parking basically is, we have a requirement of 3.3 parking stalls in the, per 500 square feet of gross floor area for retail stores in this location. That yields 19 parking spaces that are required. That's what we are proposing, which also includes a one handicap parking space. The parking was designed to also address maneuverability for the site. And I believe you should have this in your packet. This is just a blow-up version of what you have, but it's a rendering showing the maneuverability of a garbage truck and also a passenger car. Basically, in the magenta color, we're accessing, you know, for a garbage truck, we're accessing the site to the rear dumpster, backing up and then back out onto Hot Meadow Street. This is designed so we wouldn't have any backup onto Hot Meadow Street, which would be difficult to do. The other portion showing is this blue section in the back corner. What this blue is, is actually a passenger car being parked in that last parking space. Since, you know, the site is tight, the maneuverability of that parking space is very difficult. So that's why we had to actually stretch the rear or flare out the back section to accommodate a safe turn radius, as you can see in the diagram in front of you and as well as in your packet. And obviously, if there's any questions down the road regarding this, you know, please, please let me know. Now, the, the other aspect with the trucks entering the site is for loading of the product here. I believe that truck length is about a 28 to a 30-foot box truck that would be serviced in the site, which is smaller than actual garbage truck, which is shown here at a little over 31 feet. So if a garbage truck can make this turn, so can't the loading trucks for the building. The, I believe the town engineer has, one of the staff comments was regarding the width of the back of the building. I believe I have addressed that width, these auto turn diagrams before you. As again mentioned in the garbage truck maneuverability as well as that passenger car, which is key, because that's, that is very key for having the maneuverability there. With that said, I want to get into the impervious requirement. Probably easier to see it in this one. The property is a half acre, and square footage is 23,405 square feet. The building proposed is 2,848 square feet, with the impervious, not including the building, at a little over or a little under 11,000 square feet, which yields 58.7 square, 58.7% of coverage. That is one of the requests we are here for today, is to have that increase from the 40%, which is currently into the regulations, up to 60%. We are not going for the full 60%. We are actually under that. The storm drainage, which, we're getting to the storm drainage now. The site is kind of unique in a way where the existing conditions, as you can see, is , there's an existing house or a gravel driveway. That's pretty much what you have for the existing conditions. The rest of it is gravel or, or some type of vegetation back there. So obviously, we are proposing a building, we're adding a parking lot and a turning movements and a dumpster pad, all of that, which obviously will increase the impervious. By increasing the impervious, you also increase the amount of stormwater that is attributed to that site. So in order to maintain or, or hold back a zero net increase of runoff, which is a requirement, we had to prepare certain areas for detention, retention. We also have some subsurface treatment centers or storage chambers, all designed to accommodate that zero net increase. Now, we are talking about a half acre, so the, the numbers are astounding for this. They're all under 1 CFs. That's a, that's a very small amount of water that we're dealing with. And one of the issues we're having with the, with the engineering department is how to handle that. And we're talking about fractions of trying to get it perfect. So we are going back and forth with that. I looked at the numbers before I came here. We can definitely make this work. Unfortunately, I was not able to get a formal presentation or report to town staff and for them to review back for this meeting. So it just makes sense to come, talk to you about it, and then address it later. Hopefully, we can do it within the condition of approval or even administratively, if possible.
Can you speak to the drainage that was a concern of the neighboring property?
Yeah, absolutely. So basically, what we're doing with the, with the drainage is that we are collecting all the wall roof runoff from the building itself. We're going to be piping that forward to the, to the front of the property, to the retention area, which eventually will be drained into a yard drain and discharged into the state drainage system now. The added runoff in the parking area in the back will be collected into this, this dashed area, if you can see where my finger is pointing. That is actually going to be subsurface storage chambers to hold back that water and discharge into the back corner, which will be a scouring hole or a level spreader, which will hold back some of that water. Once that, that level raises, it will actually go into the wetlands area that's, that's off-site. The design of this dumpster and parking was, was to bring everything forward so we actually had suitable area for having this detention and drainage. The rest of the property where the drainage on the south side leaving the site is actually going to be remaining in the existing swale system that's there. It's very flat. You can't even tell it's a swale, but it does, you know, raise water and actually discharge, once again, into the state drainage system in front. So no added runoff is being, being, leaving the site. Hopefully, you had addressed the drainage.
Can you speak to the screening? Sorry, there were, there was also questions about the dumpster area and things like that.
The screening, the dumpster itself, that was one of the questions or concerns that the town staff had. We'll go adequate screening and the appropriate pad for it. So we did, we provided a detail. So basically, we're going to have a dumpster pad on concrete with a, I believe it's a vinyl fence surrounding Lake Inverness Sea and the rest of the properties in town. That is, that detail was added to the plan, and no other comment regarding that was, was reflected by the town staff.
Excuse me just a second. The, there is a site plan approval that's not subject to a public hearing, in which we will address those two. Okay.
In addition to the location of the dumpster, we are providing the dumpster being in the rear of the property. If you look at the aerial that we have, this is probably one of the better pictures, you can see there's, there's existing vegetation, all natural vegetation. It's already there as a protective screening. So none of these buildings should be, or this project shouldn't be affecting the view of that building. I think the concern is more on the drive section of where the visibility would be, but not to the rear of the property. Bringing that up, we have the landscape and lighting.
Before you do that, could you just point out where the off-site drainage is? You mentioned it's going to a wooded area or a wetlands area.
Okay, so in the back here, in this location where my pen is.
Who owns the woodlands or the wetlands that is going to?
The rear property is owned by, is it Ritson, John Ritson? Yeah.
That is wetlands?
This is wetlands in the rear property.
Does wetlands review this?
No, this is, this is off-site. It is not.
It's not within 100?
We're not, we're not allowed, we're not, I believe, required to go under the wetlands commission.
So off-site wetlands are not subject to the upland review?
Really?
Yep. And the wetlands have to be on the property itself. So they had actually showed the 100-foot upland review area, and then we asked.
That's why I'm confused, because it's on the site plan.
Yeah, we asked them to take it off. It confuses the issue, and it makes it assume that they need a well, it's permanent, and they do not.
Okay.
Yeah, so just, just to move on with that one, the original application, before you did have that actual footprint on there, and you were asked to remove it, which was also one of the comments by Tom. So the discharge point from this section will be, you're in that spot, will be directly to the rear property. The, the drainage off the road or the existing drainage being to this natural swale, which discharges into Hot Meadow Street. And the roof drainage will be tied into the detention area in front of the property, which also will discharge into the Hot Meadow Street system.
So the discharge into the wetlands is not expected to occur every time it rains? There's a certain capacity in your drainage system?
Correct. We're required to give you a zero net increase of runoff leaving the site from this proposed development. So basically, we can't increase any water leaving the site, so we have to either detain it or, or store it of some, of some way. And that's what our drainage calculations are providing, that we're actually, you know, not allowing an increase leaving the site.
So the amount that in your design would be leaving the site is consistent with what's leaving the site now? Is that correct?
Yes or no? There's not going to be a additional runoff leading the site. Those, the ways leading the site. So basically, we're not going to have a major discharge of water rushing and flowing and flooding the rear of the property. It's not going to happen. It's got to be stored, treated. I just want to add that we are proposing a treatment center for, in all the catch basins, which actually treats that water for siltation and that, and that's how it leaves the site. So we're not, once again, we're not increasing the waters, that's according to this design. Anything else on the drainage part?
Thank you.
With the, with the lighting and the landscaping, we are proposing four lights, four bases with light fixtures on the site.
I don't, I think these are the subject of the site plan.
Site plan.
Site plan as well?
Yeah.
All right, so let's get into the, the final end of this. Basically, we are also including best management practices, the BMPs for this site, which, which includes erosion control, anti-dragging pads, routine maintenance inspections for this site. The better cover and plannings we're proposing is all indicative of the best management practices that is usually required by, by the state of Connecticut and the EPA. Now, finally, the additional comments that were, I believe, sent over on this past Friday, which I did get this morning, but once again, unfortunately, I just couldn't get them in on time. I didn't want to create a revision to a plan, have no one see it, then come back and have to revise it again. As the commission knows, it gets monotonous, so revision dates sometime, so I try to keep it very clean. But basically, the comments were very, very minor in nature. Two of the comments were dealing with the stormwater runoff. I'll just go right through them. Comment, or is this a design question for the next application?
Will all of these, I guess, Mr. Chairman, will all of these be addressed before? Will all of these, I guess, Mr. Chairman, will all of these be addressed before?
The staff, our staff has not had time to review this, so we're going to be keeping the public hearing open.
Got it. Okay. So then we don't need to go through that?
So we don't need to go through this, I don't think.
Okay, so let me just finish up and wrap that up. Basically, we are confident with that we are going to be able to respond to those comments, and we will be addressing those in the next application before you. And hopefully, you know, once again, you can get those done administratively or even as condition of approval, it would be a solution to that.
Just one more question. As you started this portion of your presentation, you identified dates associated with the drawings that you'd be referring to. I just want to make sure those dates are consistent with what your attorney handed us. And our first three drawings are dated 8/24, and then the last one, which is the lighting one, is dated 10/1. Is that consistent with what you were trying to say?
Yes, not every sheet may have been revised. So if there's no revision to a specific sheet, there would not be a revision date to that specific sheet.
There were, the three existing conditions and site layouts dated 8/24.
And those were not revised.
Landscape and grading plan, 8/24. Construction details and notes, 8/24.
Yeah, they are consistent with those revised. And the last sheet should be dated for October because that was a sheet that was added. Use it in common.
Just wrapping up with a special exception to the impervious surface again, as referred to Merrick with the back, the maneuverability with not only the, and you do have that, you do have this depicting, the garbage truck, it's shown at 31 feet. The delivery trucks will be in the range of essentially the same size. They're going to be about 30 feet. The box trucks for delivery, there'll be at least one a day. So the ability to have this movement, which is why he provided you with the radii, the turning movements here, is really important. I know the engineer, the town engineer, asked, you know, can you do it at 24, which is the minimum required by your regulations, so you can go above it. It really doesn't work with 24 for any of these turning movements. And he suggested, well, the garbage truck could always come in the morning. My client indicated that most people complain when the garbage trucks do come early in the morning, they want them to come later in the day if they're sleeping next door, whatever the case may be. But more importantly, for just delivery trucks, the 24-foot aisle width doesn't work. So I just wanted to point that out. And this does add to the ability to be able to get in and out in front with having that double exit, for people being able to get out to the right without having to wait, and it just, you know, reduces the congestion there. So I just wanted to point those two things out because it is a special exception to increase the impervious surface for the property, which is what this presentation is focusing on. And I would just respectfully refer you relative to your review of that special exception application, that I think most of the other properties in this immediate area that are his own business are probably greater than the 58.7 percent that we're looking for as far as impervious surface. And more importantly, we are addressing the stormwater and understand that relative to the site plan component, that we will wait for the response, follow-up from the town engineer based on his report. Whether that's done through the condition or whatever, that's within the commission's discretion. But I just wanted to make sure that I addressed the impervious surface, which is the basis for this application.
Thank you. Okay, questions from the commission?
I just had a couple of questions. So this drawing of the garbage truck turning radius and all that, and then you mentioned there'll probably be at least one delivery truck a day, what you had said. What I noticed here is there's no cars in this parking lot. I think all of these turning radii assume that the parking lot's going to be empty. And also, I know there is some concern, I know what traffic's like at that end of town. It's very busy. And now we're adding a garbage truck, delivery trucks pulling in and out, and all of these drawings assumes there's no cars in here. And I happen to drive a school bus for a living, and I know pulling in and out of parking lots is very difficult. And then I'm picturing backing up and doing, and there'd be cars sort of, not neatly parked, but parked in various positions. So this has been taken into consideration, and how would that be taken care of?
It actually has. That's why I showed the passenger cars, to show you that we can actually get a car out of those parking spaces without going over any of the lanes. So that's why the flare. However, the garbage truck, and that was one of the recommendations the town staff had, was for garbage trucks to come earlier in the morning when there are no cars. Now, the parking spaces, you know, are designed to have 19 parking spaces. I don't think you're going to have all 19 cars at one time on that site.
You don't need 19, you just need a couple in the wrong place.
Right, and then, but you don't know where they're going to be parking, so.
My point.
Yeah, so, yeah. The main goal of that was to show the maneuverability of that. As far as when that truck is going to be there, I don't have.
Right, so we can't, so I'm just asking a question. So we can't guarantee it'll be there at off-hours, and what you're saying is we don't know where cars are going to be parked in the parking lot.
And the response to that, Mr. Commissioner, is that with the, with a package store use, you have high turnover, time to read. You don't have people parking and then shopping as they would at Barnes &amp; Noble for two hours.
Sure.
So that the idea would be that if there was a delivery being made, just as there is with a Dunkin' Donuts or whatever, and they have to wait for some spaces to free up, that that would occur, but that's why Merrick added the cars in the back, just to show that the turning could happen, and it would just be a matter of waiting for those two cars in the last, so that you could have the backup. But that was the whole point of that relative to, I was just trying to explain that in response to your question.
No, I understand that. I mean, I have, the other reason I ask that question is I have a CD on when I drive a large vehicle, I know what it's like pulling in and out of places.
The other option is if you know when a delivery is going to happen, you can actually cone off that area. That would probably be the most logical approach to something like that.
God bless you, Chris.
Well, let me just, okay, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Kevin.
I'm good.
Donna.
Bruce.
I'm not done with that point. I remember reading in the material that we had before this meeting started, relative to this dimension, I think that area between the parking stalls are, I think the number was 18 feet deep, each one, and that there's a reference to the area in between, and the suggestion it's out of sync with common designs for uses like this or retail or something along those lines. It wasn't just sort of a question. It was stated in relation to a comment from, or standard from Connecticut DOT or somebody. And they point out that this design calls for 38 feet and 34 feet between the stalls when it's common to see 24 feet. And so I understand what you're saying, that you can't back up a, you know, there's an issue with a minimum amount of space that's required to back up, you know, a truck servicing the dumpster. But I'm not clear then where anybody could do this with 24 feet.
I think that's exactly why we had to flare that out, to accommodate that.
I, it's just, it doesn't seem consistent, as I view it, that anybody could be doing it with something less than 38, 34 feet between, you know, as this design calls for. It would be impossible then to do it anywhere for 24 feet, and therefore, our town engineer or DOT, somebody's mistaken when they suggest 24 feet as a reasonable benchmark.
Bruce, this is a theoretical question that doesn't really bear on this application.
I think it might bear on the application, only in the fact that we're asking for a special exception to exceed, and we need the additional pavement width back here in order to accommodate the truck movements.
But what Bruce is saying is 24 doesn't work.
Well, 24 works if you've got an aisle to pull up in and an aisle over here to pull back down. A truck can make a U-turn. With a dead-end parking area, when you're coming in, 24 feet is tight for a U-turn. So by widening it out, a truck can come in, make those maneuvers, and leave, where in a 24-foot space, a 30-foot long truck couldn't make that K-turn maneuver. Needs a little bit of extra space. If there was a 24-foot aisle with a loop around to another 24-foot aisle and a second exit point, he could, he could make that maneuver. So the extra space up there allows that K-turn to happen in the dead-end parking lot.
I mean, the 24 is basically referring to backing up with a normal vehicle.
A standard passenger vehicle.
And being able to maneuver with a parking spot on the other side.
Exactly, 24 feet is appropriate.
It's not taking into account.
But not to make U-turns in the driveway. And that's why he showed you the maneuver of the vehicle here, coming out, you can't back into the green space, but you can back out here and make that turn in a little bit wider space. So that's one of the reasons for the wider parking spaces and one of the reasons for the exceeding of 40 percent and the special exception. So it is, it is related.
Okay. You happy, Bruce?
I'm not jumping to joy down here. I hear, I hear the answer. Thank you.
Okay, all right. We're in a public hearing. We have the opportunity now to hear comments from the audience. Could anybody like to speak to this application? Yes, Judy?
Judy Ruben, once again, 126 Hot Meadow, Unit 3B. I've heard what was said about the work that would be done to guarantee that there would be no additional runoff, no added runoff from the property into the wetlands that are adjacent to the Talcott Acres property, and I appreciate all of that. What I have not heard discussed, and what I think could exacerbate the problem of the increased impervious coverage, is where's the snow going to be piled when the plans come through? And I can pretty much guarantee it's not going to stay on the impervious surface to drain into the storm drains. It's going to end up on some of the green space, and it's going to go in unexpected places. So I would ask that the commission consider that. One further comment I would make, since I do sometimes go to Live Every Day, the physical therapy place, which is right across from Dunkin' Donuts, every day, a huge semi comes onto the property, but it has to back in because that's the only way it can get in there and still get out. So, you know, there's interesting things to consider about that, but I just leave you with that thought. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Judy. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
My knees are gone, Mr. Chairman.
Mine too.
Don't worry, socks, I'm 20 years, 60 years old. Get pudding for knees. Two items very quickly. The chart we can see on the floor shows 19 parking spaces. That's a lot of spaces. And if he needs 19, he's going to generate a lot more traffic than what we've been hearing presented to us tonight. The second thing is that the property from Hot Meadow Street through this site, through Talcott Acres, decreases as you go to the river. I have not heard anything about the parking lot being paved or gravel. He said the driveway was going to be gravel. No? Thank goodness. Thank you. If it's not adjusted, whatever they put down in that parking lot in the wintertime, salt or what have you, is going to drain through Mr. Ritsen's property and into that wetlands, and that wetlands runs open through Talcott Acres. And we're going to have that material running through. And I think that if it's approved, the zoning should make sure that the level at the far end, the east end of that parking lot should be the same height as Hot Meadow Street. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Deborah Vischer, 126 Hot Meadow, 6A. I wanted to bring to the board's attention, the commission's attention, that we have had at Talcott Acres reports of semis coming into our complex and turning around and going, leaving. And I'm wondering now, when I hear about the Dunkin' Donuts, if these trucks are coming in, turning around, and then it makes it easier for them to drive down to Dunkin' Donuts and back in to the Live Every Day area. And I'm hoping that that will not be something that could happen with this package store. If they're on, if the trucks are unable to maneuver inside the parking lot, they might decide it's just easier to back in, and they might decide that our Talcott Acres driveway is a good place to turn around and go north and back in. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't hear any more.
I think we'll make a motion to continue.
What a good idea. You've been reading my script.
Mr. Chairman, regarding application 1853, I move that we continue this public hearing.
56.
56, okay, 56. Continue this to our next speaker.
Second by Donna. Any more discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Close. Six, nothing, it passes. Thank you. We will continue this to the November 17th, is it?
19.
19? Okay. Mr. Secretary, do you have your strength?
Application 1853.
I think we have most of the people here interested in this one.
Application 1853, Lori and Paul Salado, orders for special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section 1101 of the Missouri Landowners Act. For a home occupation for a landscape business, one of the existing residents on the property located at 16 West Compton Road, Cessna G O P, Block 120, Lot 0588, Zone R15.
Mr. Chairman, I recuse myself.
Okay. Okay. You've accused yourself. Okay, do we have someone to speak to this application?
My name is Laurie Sledo.
Okay. Good evening.
My name is Laurie Sledo. I am here today asking to run my landscape business that I own with my husband out of our house that we bought at 16 West Compton. I'm sorry, my husband couldn't be here, he's watching the kids tonight. So just a little bit of background on those. We are both born and raised here in Simsbury, graduated from high school to Holyfield. We have two kids in the school system here. I have a stepson who's out of the school system and in college now. We decided to start our business in 2010 and has successfully grown very nicely here in this town with 90 percent of our customers in the city, and the rest are family of Randy, Avon, and Ken. We bought this property in June. We wanted to stay in the central district to raise our kids, who have been going to Central for a couple of years now. And knowing that we were going to run our business, hopefully run our business out of our house, we have one, we have two employees. One is my stepson. When he's not at school, he comes home on weekends and school vacations. And I have, and I have one other employee that works for us full-time when it is not raining. And we, we love this town. I mean, we decided to stay for a reason. So I am here to ask you guys permission to run my business on the pass. I have letters from customers that could not make it today. I have copies if you'd like to have them. I just want to let you guys know if you'd like. We, we do have two trailers that sit on the side of our garage right now. As we just, we moved into, we bought the house at the end of June. We took a month to fix it up, late nights, days off from work during a heat wave after heat wave. We didn't move until the end of July, the beginning of August. We moved in very slowly at nights on days off. We have... We have, everything is stored in our garage, which is an extra-large two-car garage, except for our two trailers that we are planning to put a fence up. I probably would have the fence up already if I didn't get that letter in the mail. So I held off on it because I wasn't sure what to do. We have, I have a copy of that as well from a company to put up a fence. It would be behind our garage, going towards our back property line as well as the front part of our garage. And it's kind of hard because my house is, you can see the property line, I have three streets covering my house. So basically, everything would be on, you're facing the house on the left side. And we would back the trailers in every night. We unload our equipment, so it's not showing anywhere right now, but the trailers would be behind a fence. And I would have the fence closed. This, pretty much the day I bought the house, I went to our neighbors who were outside playing and let them know that we were wanting to do this, that they were okay with it, and they didn't seem to have any suspicion that there was a problem. And, I don't know. This is my first bet up here. Hopefully my last.
Can you just describe daily schedule with trailers? What goes on?
Oh, sure.
Just to give me an idea of what...
Yep. So my employee comes in, his name is Adam. Let's give a name to it. He comes in at eight o'clock. He hooks the truck up to the trailer, and he loads what equipment he needs on, which is, on a daily basis, it's the mowing equipment. So it's a sit-down rider, sometimes a walk-behind rider, and my husband doesn't break it because it's broken right now. And then he leaves for the whole day and does his job in most people's houses. And usually, between four and five o'clock, pending weather and stuff like that, he'll come back. He'll unload the trailer into our garage, and then back the trailer up and sit. Right now, it's just sitting right next to the garage. When the fence goes up, he will open the fence, put it in the garage, and go. My husband does more of the landscaping, so pending on what he is doing, he usually leaves between eight and 8:30. He likes to also walk the kids to school every day. And so he'll leave with his truck, the tools in his truck. Once in a while, he has to use the other trailer that we have that carries Bobcat. It's a loader. It's not a big loader. It's not like big machines like Simscroft, it's a little tiny dude. And he'll load that on the truck, that is also stored in the garage, and he'll go off and do his work for the day, come back at the end of the night, unload that, park the trailer on the side of the garage. As of me, I also work full-time at another local business here in town, as well as do all this stuff very late at night, all the paperwork and stuff. But I can be in and out just because I'm a mom of three kids and I have a million places to go. But that's usually our schedule. That's, we don't want to grow big. We don't want to be a big company. We like our customers. Our customers are, we, the only resident commercial property I think we have is the Simsbury United Methodist Church, which is my church. So they can't have anybody else molesting me. But other than that, everybody else is homeowners. People in the neighborhood got customers right around the corner. I grew up, literally, I believe, eight to 10 houses around the corner my whole life. My dad grew up in the same house that I grew up in. I lived that neighborhood my whole life, and I did not want to move out of my little safe bubble over there. My kids love the kids around there. My neighbors, my parents are right there. They're always over, we're always there. So we didn't want to go far. So, but basically, one trailer leaves for the day, it comes back. Today, it came back at one o'clock because the rain just wouldn't stop, so that happens sometimes.
Thank you.
Your honor.
Okay. Commission members have questions? Other questions?
Sure. Could you tell me where you came from? I mean, your business was functioning somewhere else.
Yes. So I did have available property where I was able to park my stuff for quite a few years. They sold the property. So when I had to, to make a long story short, we had to move to my parents' house because my husband got sick. And so we did, my parents had a fence, and we did put our stuff behind their fence. My neighbors, who I'd grown up with, I'm 34-years-old, I've known these people since I was a little thing. We spoke with them, we let them know what the situation was happening, so we actually did run it out of my parents' house a little bit. Any bigger stuff, we have a friend who has 250 acres that he lets us keep stuff that we don't use seasonally at his place. And so that's what we did up until now. And then when my husband got better, we looked for six months to find a house. You know, buying this house, we knew from the get-go that we were putting up a fence, and, you know, that we don't have a lot of stuff, and that we rotate between our friend's house that has, you know, stores, and, you know, larger stuff that, out and stuff like that. And I say larger, I mean like two plows that we're not going to use, hopefully, for at least another two months. You know, but when those canal, I'll bring the trailers up to his house, and the plows will be behind the fence. Because we also do work for him as well.
Have you talked with the neighbors? You know, I didn't mention having been approached by neighbors about the business in, say, the last two or three months, but there's a number who are not enthusiastic about your business.
Absolutely, I understand that. Well, I thought I addressed it to the neighbors that were directly affected, which is, there's one property that is basically but upline with my only backyard park. I spoke with them, and they seemed very fine. I also have two neighbors that are on the side. I think it's East Comstead, and I had spoken with them, and they seemed to understand that, you know, we needed time to take, put the fence up. You know, like I said, I just moved in, I've got kids, a full-time job, you know, I have everything ready to go, but I, when I got the letter in the mail, I kind of put the brakes on it because I didn't want to spend the money on putting a fence up, knowing that that might not be the right solution. I did not talk to anybody in front of me because it wasn't, it weren't friendly. And nobody came up to me. So I didn't think of that. And on the other side of the houses, they were all new neighbors, and they don't seem to have any problems. They talked to us very nicely. They didn't express any concerns or anything like that.
I'm not going to ask you any more questions. I just want to make sure that you understand that there's two issues here. One is the nature of your business. Does it qualify to be in a residential location at all? And then the storage of that equipment?
Right.
There's another?
Okay.
I'm just a small business trying to make it in a town like this, you know? We love this town, and we don't want to go anywhere else. But I do actually have letters that I'd be happy to give to you, especially one with my neighbor from my other, from my parents' house, knowing that we had had to ask them permission, you know, ask them and let them know that we were going to be storing some equipment in our backyard. I apologize, my stapler's not thick enough to go through all these pages, so I had to give a clip. They're just a bunch of letters. They're not in any specific order. Most of them are customers' cars, we work for them. Especially, the only one that I know really has is Mrs. Rieger, who was the next one we booked, you know? Like, we always asked, because that's the gate that we used, was on her side at the time, and we just asked her, you know? We always kept her in the loop. You know, we asked, you know, not asked permission, but, you know, we just wanted to make sure that everybody was happy in that neighborhood, which was the same houses around the corner, and everybody seems to always be kind of, and they're very loving and about our situation.
But your situation is, were you describing that as temporary? Your intention is to move the equipment and that part of the operation somewhere else?
Right.
Or you're intending long-term?
Right. Now I'm intending, yes, I am intending, but I just, I was always courteous of my neighbors. I mean, my neighbors I've known for a long time in that, on that little section of the neighborhood, now on the, you know, the Comstead side in the neighborhood, and I absolutely love where I live. You know, we worked really hard to buy the house that we have. We bought our house specifically knowing that we were going to run our business out of our house. You know, I don't, I know I don't have a lot of woods and stuff like that, but, you know, Central School District doesn't have a lot of woods in my, you know, price range, you know? So, we knew that we were going to be putting a fence up, we were always courteous, we, you know, we're always safe. I mean, my kids go to Central School. We always are making sure that everybody is safe around us. When it comes to the equipment, I know that it can be scary. But, you know, I mean...
Thank you.
So, Donna, do you have any questions?
Not yet.
What exactly of equipment do you have that has to be stored?
It's outside. Two trailers. I actually have a couple wheelbarrows, but I haven't gotten the hooks yet to hang them up in the garage, but normally I would have my wheelbarrows in the garage, but they're outside right now. But I have my two trailers, mainly they're the only things that can't fit in my garage.
Trailers like?
Landscape trailers. So, they, like, they're not like big ones like D W Burr has, or like even what Simscroft has with their big machines. They're just small landscape trailers. I think one is an 18-foot landscape trailer, and the other one's smaller than that, and that one carries the small loader that we have to do like the walkways, three-seat lawns, you know?
So you got a Bobcat, you got a pickup truck?
Uh, yes. Yeah, I drive a pickup truck as my mommy van, because I will not have a minivan. And my husband has a truck, as well as the maintenance guy has a truck.
Kids riding in the back? No.
No. I have four doors, everybody fits in. So I have a vehicle that's mine that I drive to my own job and stuff like that. My husband has a truck, my landscaper, my employee Adam has a truck.
You have two trucks, two trailers, Bobcat?
I have more than two trucks. I also keep my son's truck on my property when he's not, when he's at school. So he comes on the weekend, he'll drive that truck around.
And that's outside?
Yes.
It's going to be outside?
Well, it will be behind it. Well, my truck and my husband's truck, it will be on the driveway. And then my employee takes the, my other, my maintenance truck home every day, because that's his, like, work is, you know, we offer him a truck to drive. And then my son's truck is there while he's not in school. I mean, while he is at school, then he comes home on the weekends and on vacations and stuff, he uses it to be a teenager.
So, counting right, there's four trucks, two trailers, a Bobcat?
Right. Which, the Bobcat's in the garage. It only gets pulled out when he wants, needs to load it into the truck, I mean, onto the trailer, so to speak. I mean, he did pull a bush out in our yard with it, too. That was the only time together.
Okay. The trailer is a flat, are there two flat trailers, or is there a box trailer?
Nope, they're flat trailers, they're not enclosed trailers, if that's what you're asking.
Do you guys have Exhibit 7 in your packets?
There's pictures, right?
I think there's pictures, and it actually shows the trailers, and it shows probably like three trucks in the pictures. So it'll give you a kind of an idea of what you're referring to.
That's the picture right there.
And if yours aren't in color, you're welcome to look at mine. I don't know how we photocopied them, so.
That's, that's something that one of their neighbors sent in.
Yeah, it's a picture from the neighbors. Yeah. But that shows the trailers, so that you guys have an idea of what they're...
Yeah, the one that I submitted, one was already out in use, so I only had the other trailer when I had seen the picture here.
Okay.
Aside from your non-family employee, does the nature of your business bring clients to and from?
Nobody comes to my house.
Any extra?
Just a lot of people in the neighborhood. Nope, no traffic. Nobody comes to our house, except my, you know, obviously friends and family, but there's no customers that come to our house. There's no new clients, you know, they don't speak.
Who are you listening to? Okay. Any more questions before we open it up?
Is there a site plan here that shows where the fence would be?
It's a really horrible drawing of me and a pen, because I'm not as professional as these other guys here, unfortunately. But basically, it would be coming...
Is that your garage?
That's my garage. So it would be coming on a panel, or she would be doing off it, and then going all the way to the wood line.
The woods being...
Yep, that way. And then the back of the garage, which is like in the middle of the property, like where my back door is to go outside, would have a fence that would go there all the way to the wood line.
How would you get in the fence?
The one, the first, the first side that I showed you at, on this side.
Is there a driveway there, or no?
Nope, I just drive on the grass. There's no septic, there's no leach field, there's nothing there. So I would just drive on the grass.
So it wouldn't be grass after a while, but...
To open it up to, from the public, would anyone in the public care to speak to this application? Please, at 9:25. Don't repeat yourself.
I'm Amanda Smith. I have lived in Simsbury since 2012 for about six years. I know Lori, our kids should go to the same school. We've been close friends for about five years. I've used her as my landscaper for four years. She's taking care of some removal, landscaping, block cleanups, all that type of stuff. I'm also owner of Simsbury Junior Warriors Club with her. We do some volunteer work in town, and we both do the PTO at our children's school. She, as long as I've known her, just wants to get back to this community and do the right thing. She is the most honest person I know. I helped her move into this home that she moved into. It was a lot of scrubbing and moving things in. She had a lot of stuff that needed to go into the garage, and I do know that, I think the pictures were taken about seven days after she actually physically moved in. And while I was helping her move in, I knew that she had been going around and trying to get fence quotes and fence drawings and things like that, because she had never had an intention to move in there and have it be obvious that she was running, you know, a landscaping business from it. And it's beyond her character to ever do anything malicious like that at all. And I also know that some of the neighbors that did speak to her, or they had good conversations, learned that she simply was going to be putting a fence up, and it wasn't a problem with those people. And, you know, it'd just be nice if we could all talk to each other, and I think that would mitigate a lot of this 9:30 at night stuff. But I just also want to speak to her character again and say that we do a lot of work for social services in town here at the VFW, homeless shelters. She is always to chair them. She is always early, she's always organized. She's plodding out on Christmas morning before, after she got up with her kids and opened presents. She doesn't miss a day of work. She never has. She offers everyone to go to all Simsbury businesses. They live at the Home Depot, they go to Weldons. She works at Bosco's. She leads, lives, breathes, and lives in this town. And I just think, I understand that there's an issue with it being a residential area, but she plans to have whatever the town needs for her to be within compliance, so she will not be obviously working a business out of her home. And she, I know that she's already in compliance with the one non-family member, and it is only her interest to be completely in compliance with you. Just wanted to speak to that.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Smith, what's your address?
11 Forest Lane, Simsbury.
Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Seiderer, S.E.I.D., I need, we're going to ask E.R.E.R., 48 Sand Hill Road. S.E.I.D., E.R.E.R. 48 Sand Hill Road. I think my, my letter was one of the ones that was submitted to you, but I just wanted to recap it really quickly. I've known Lori through Central School. She's been a room parent for at least two years, in addition to working her landscaping business, and, so she has her own local business. She also worked at Bosco's as her local business. And she puts in a ton of hours at the school, volunteering, being the room parent, showing up when lots of other people are not available to show up. And every time I've asked her for a referral, like Amanda said, she doesn't say, "Go to Home Depot." She's always recommending other local businesses. So I think that Lori and Paul are true champions of Simsbury, and they're the kind of hardworking people that we should be proud to have as part of this community. People who want everything to stay local, and want to stay here, and are proud to be here, and walk their kids to school every day. And anything that we can do to support that, I would ask that you do and grant them this exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this application? You stood up first.
Matt Smolik, Two Carber Circle, right across the street. Last name's Smolik, S.M.O.L., N.I.K. My family and I live... My family and I lived in the house at Two Carver Circle for over forty-seven years, and, uh, they moved in in June, and we were kind of shocked at the landscaping equipment showing up, not understanding what they were doing at the time. Asked the town, get involved, to find out what's going on, and clearly, no way does this operation, uh, keep in line with the R-15 zoning regulations that Simsbury has adopted, especially Article Seven, Section C One, where it clearly states there shall be no exterior storage of the material, and no exterior indication of the profession going on. So, the fence isn't gonna help with that, with the trailers coming and going every day, the Bobcat, they have mower equipment coming in and out of the garage every day, apparently they're gonna be doing snow plowing, so that, that equipment's gonna be on-site during the winter months, so. We all, at the, uh, Carver Circle and West Tomsted, East Tomsted area, we've all invested in our properties, uh, the properties are small, one-third acre lots, and the houses are relatively close together all around. This business activity only devalues our property long-term, uh, no one wants to buy it next to a commercial business like this, it's just gonna devalue our properties. So, we're, my family's here today, they asked that the zoning commission deny this special request, or exception to the zoning, uh, R-15 rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Anne Helwig, with Wells, Twenty-Six Seminary Road, on the corner of West Tomsted, and, um, we let the crossguard park in our driveway mornings, the children walk through our property without permission, and, um, to save them from being at the corner of Seminary and West Tomsted. My husband got very concerned about someone getting hit there, because people come up quickly and turn quickly, so, um, I feel that, um, once you let a commercial person into a residential area, it's open to other people, and that would be the greatest concern. The children, uh, the crossguard is there from quarter of eight to eight fifteen, and that is when the children would be walking, um, down Carver, from Carver Circle and Stadewort and those areas, and, um, coming down West Tomsted, which seems to be the same time the trucks started out, and that's a big concern. This has always been a residential area, Carver Circle, Stadewort, Berry Lane, and, um, I don't feel that it's a place for a business. I, um, I admire you for doing a business and, uh, all the work you do, but, uh, I really don't think this is the area for a business. I would strongly be against it.
Thank you. Someone else, someone else wanted to speak over their thought?
My name is Marie Smolnik, S M O L N I K. I'm Matt's mom, and I also lived at Two Carver Circle for the last forty-seven years. When they moved in, I had no idea what was happening, the truck showed up, all this equipment shows up, lawn mowers, Bobcat trailers, we didn't know what was happening. And this clearly is a, a commercial business right in the heart of our community, right in the heart of our neighborhood. We're all small houses, a lot of us have lived there many decades, and when I look out my living room window in the morning, I pull up the shade, and there's three trucks lined up. One of those trucks, there's two pickups, your pickup, your helper's pickup, and then your husband's huge Ford steak truck, a kind of big box truck that holds, um, mulch and topsoil and that kind of thing. Now, when that truck backs out, it has a backup horn that blows right into my living room and my bedroom. I'm right across the street, this is all at my front door, and it's not pleasant at all. I can't see that a commercial business, it should be functioning right in the middle of our little neighborhood. It's, it's not the place for it. I appreciate their work, I know that they both work hard, but it's just not the place to have a commercial business, especially a noisy one like that, there's trucks going, it's just very disappointing, very disappointing. The trailers behind the fence would do no good, those trailers have to be loaded and they have to be deployed, they come out of it, come out of the fence, come around, they go off, right now the trucks go off the east side of the lawn on East Tomsted, come around, go up by the garage, get loaded, and then come back out on the Carver Circle side. They have Carver Circle on the north, West Tomsted on the west, and East Tomsted on the east, so the trucks circle around to do, excuse me, to do all this. Now, they load up the Bobcat, or they load up the mowers, they put all the tools, everything from the garage on there, and then they leave out the driveway, right in front of me, go down to West Tomsted, to the intersection, and then follow Carver Circle around where I believe they exit going down Stadewort, because the hill was too steep on West Tomsted, down to Seminary. But this is an operation going on, this is a business going on in the middle of our little neighborhood. I've been there forty-seven years, I've never seen, we've never had something like that in our neighborhood, never. We've never had somebody try to set up a, a commercial business in, in, right in our neighborhood, and they use their lawn, they drive across the grass to pick up the trailers to operate all this. This is a lot of equipment that's in a house over there, in a residence, and I've had people say to me, but my house is devalued now, because I'm right directly, there's only two houses on that little stretch of Carver Circle, their house on the north, and my house on the, no, my house is on the north, their house is on the south side of the road. There's only the two houses, they face each other. When we moved here, I knew the people who originally built their house, because they originally owned all of Carver Circle, and they, they saw to it that the Carver Circle houses were built only by four builders, all in the style of New England style, little Cape Cod houses, or a couple colognes, and a couple salt boxes, and they were built in the fifties. Now we have a commercial landscaping business. Very disturbing, very disturbing. I know that you got the property and you like the property, because you could store all your stuff there.
Yes, please, please address the issue.
There is, store, uh, there's other landscaping companies in Simsbury, the little ones, and they all store their gear and storage facilities that are set up for that, and there is a couple around here that you can do that. So, if they can't spend the money to, to do it right, then I have to, it's, it's gonna cost me on the value of the home, because you can't sell a house across from that, you just can't, nobody wants to see those trucks going in and out. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back?
Elizabeth Howery, five West Tomsted. There's only a few houses on West Tomsted, on, on the corner next to Anne Helwig, and, um, my concern is the children walking to and from Central. The traffic, if you look at an eighteen-foot trailer, that's two-thirds of what your front desk is here, that's a considerable size. Between East Tomsted and West Tomsted, West Tomsted has the lesser hill, so in the wintertime, West Tomsted gets the traffic of the cars of West Tomsted, East Tomsted, and Carver Circle. So, we're gonna get the traffic of the children, the cars, trailer, and I know you've turned your life around, and kudos to the business, everything.
Well, you're not supposed to address her like that.
Excuse me?
To have, to have...
Address the issue.
To have an issue in a, a business like this, Carver Circle and East Tomsted, West Tomsted, that area used to be a block party. We used to, we used to cut off East Tomsted, West Tomsted, and that area was a block party for our neighborhood at, at Labor Day weekend, once a year, and that's what we look forward to, and now it's a commercial business, and it's completely changed our neighborhood, for, for our kids to have to now look out for an eighteen-foot trailer coming up. It's, it's just risky, I just think it's too risky.
Thank you. Someone else?
I'm Joe LaValle, Carver's, forty-two Carver Circle. L A, B is in Victor, A, L A. You know, all I'm gonna say is, is the Carver Circle, they, I agree with every, what everybody has said, and I'm gonna agree with what Lori said, it's a great neighborhood, great place to live, I, I, I understand why she wants to live there, and I understand why she wants to raise her family there, that's why we all live there, it was a nice, quiet neighborhood, residential, we all bought our houses, understanding it was residential, and for it to end up having a commercial business there would be, which is a travesty to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Josefina Cabezas, C A B E Z A S, fourteen East Tomsted, I'm right across Lori, and I know her from school before, for several years, I've been her room parent, too, she's the mom that brings the cookies, and she's always with the kids, and when she told me that they were moving in, I was so excited, because we have good people moving to the neighborhood, and that's what you want, and, uh, I've never thought about the equipment, because I know they're great workers, and everybody loves them with their jobs and everything, and from day one she said, don't worry, we're putting up a fence, you won't be able to see anything, but we're, we're just moving, and we're having plans, and she was going to every neighbor that was outside saying that, and also with the trailers, every other house that has landscaping has the same trailers coming in another neighborhood, it's not only her trailers, UPS trucks, everything, um, their parents, her husband, too, is very nice with our kids, I have a three-year-old, and she's afraid of a lot of people, but her husband, she's the side, so, I know their parents, and they're looking out, their, their three kids are always outside, too, and I think that's it, we, from the beginning she said, we're putting up a fence, we also talked about sending, her sending a letter to everybody around the circle, explaining the same thing, because maybe that will lessen the, all the complaints that you receive, um, yeah?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ruth Forbes, and I live on forty-nine Carver Circle, and I, I agree with, with everybody has said, uh, not everybody, but my neighbors, and, uh, I'm sure this lady, including you, are wonderful people, but I find these trucks offensive, uh, Sunday, I counted five trucks in, in, in the neighborhood, on the lot, and on the lawn, and in back of the house, and so forth, and, uh, as far as, uh, traffic is concerned with these trucks, and somebody talked about, uh, East Tomsted, West Tomsted, and it has from Seminary, a very narrow access, and on either side is an embankment, I mean, it's steep, where do you go, and where do you go with your car? There comes a truck, and you come up, and there are kids coming from school, where do they go? And, uh, later on in Fridays, some would, but not very much. No, I think this neighborhood is not, uh, suitable for truck business, so, I don't know, sorry my accent, but, that's all I can say, I, I think it's awful, I'm so disappointed.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm Don Colantonio, forty-six Carver Circle, and, uh, I just have, wanna share in safety concerns, environmental concerns with fuel storage and use, and, uh, and just neighborhood blight, it's, it's really unsightly. I live around the corner, and it's, uh, it's, it's stressful just looking at it, driving by. It's nice to have another young family in the, in the neighborhood, but, you know, we've got, we can't, we can't run a business there, with construction equipment, steak trucks, Bobcats, pickups, and trailers, so, it's one, two cents.
Thank you very much.
C O L A N T O N I O.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Nikki Grescher, G R O E S C H N E R, I live at twenty-five Northfield Road, which is around the corner, um, as far as the safety issues of having trucks drive through the street, um, my kids are walkers, there are trucks all the time, I rarely feel like I see Lori's trucks, I see other landscaping businesses coming through, I see FedEx trucks, they're often doing work, cutting down trees, I feel like there are always safety issues that my kids are looking out for, I don't feel like the day they moved in, everything got dangerous, and I don't feel like everything got ugly the day they moved in, I think if they have plans to work to put up a fence, I think that they should be granted that opportunity, um, but as someone who has young children who walk to school every day, um, I do not feel that it's, it's a safety issue, and we have to cross Seminary around that big hill, um, and like I said, I rarely see, uh, their trucks, I see other trucks, and, um, so, it doesn't seem like a problem to me, as someone who has young kids in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Desmarais, D E S M A R A I S, thirty-seven Carver Circle, um, I've only lived there for two and a half years, but when we, it was exactly what we were looking for when we bought that home, and, uh, we love the quiet neighborhood, and we love the fact that there's kids like this big up and down the street on their bicycles and skateboards, and we love seeing all the kids in the neighborhood. But my biggest concern is that it's, I understand against the regulations to have a business run out of your home, especially that kind of business, that's what bothers me the most. I, I think that the answer is not a, a fenced-in area, because that's just covering it when they're not there, and when they're working and loading up, you're gonna see it all, that's the part that bothers me, I think a business like that should be run off-site, you know, if you wanna live in the neighborhood, that's great, love having another family, young family in the neighborhood, but not, not the equipment, that should be off-site in a rental space of some kind, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tia Remo, last name is R A I M O, and I live, um, sixty-eight Library Lane, um, I've known Lori for almost three years now, our kids go to the same school, both of our children have been in the same class the past few years, and I have just gotten to know her through our school, she has been a huge asset, she has dedicated a lot of time and has invested in our community, um, just the amount of things that I have seen her do and experience with her donations and dedication and work that she's done in our community and in her school community, um, has been absolutely heartwarming to watch. I know that there are issues with the, the zoning and everything, but she is, she wants to be in compliance with, with what you guys, you know, ask, and, um, and I would like to support her in any way that I possibly can, because I do believe that the small, her small business is, is a huge asset to our community, um, you know, as it was said before, with the safety of the children, I, I don't live in that area, however, my kids are always walking... However, my kids are always walking, you know, to friends' houses. Even in my area, we have trucks all the time, landscaping trucks all the time, you know, just businesses coming in and out. And so as a parent, I, you know, I teach my kids how to walk down safely, and I, you know, I just think it's everywhere. Like I said, in my, where I live, we have trucks all the time, and so I'm not as concerned with that part of it. But I just wanted to come and just let you know that I, I do support her, her business, and I think it's been a wonderful asset to our community.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
I already spoke Marie Smallnick, 2 Carver Circle, but I want to add one thing. The Bobcat, when it's loaded on the trailer, it needs to, the trailer has to come out on the road, on Harbor Circle, to be loaded. It has to drive it out of the garage, down the driveway, and load it because that's flat over there. It's not a curve. The property, their property tapers downhill between, West Thompson sits a little higher than East Thompson, and so the property curves downhill, so he drives the, the Bobcat out of the garage, down the driveway, out by the road to load it on the trailer. And it has to be secured down. That needs a lot of work to get the Bobcat secure on the trailer. And there, the Bobcat, that, that operation has, takes part on Carver Circle, on the road, in front of my house. Now, I'm not saying that that's the most ugly thing in the world. It's not. They're working. It's not the place for it. It's not the place for it. I don't wanna look out my front door in the morning and see your Bobcat being loaded up. I feel like I'm living at a, a commercial, you know, a, a commercial storage site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing on application 1853.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second. I'm interested in whether or not this is a good idea, to close the public hearing.
Pursuits versus?
Well, if we continue it to the 17th. There's an opportunity for further discussion among the...
The commission will have opportunity to discuss it.
I'm thinking that there's quite a diversity of opinion between groups out there, and maybe they can, maybe a little bit more time would let them resolve that.
Let's look at it. You hoping they work out?
If we close the public hearing now, it's done, that's, there isn't a chance to...
Well, I don't think they're gonna work it out in, in this meeting.
No, 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 I mean, but they could come back with new input during an open public hearing, and if we close the public hearing, they can't, that's all.
Do you think they're going to come back with new input?
I don't know.
I'm not...
Yeah, I've seen it.
I'm not seeing it.
Okay. Bruce?
I don't object to continuing the public hearing, but I, I don't think that we should do that simply on the basis of hope that somebody will think of a solution here, you know, where everybody could be happy or at least not totally unhappy. I don't think that's gonna happen between now and two weeks from now. So I, I don't, I don't have another reason to offer that we might continue keeping the public hearing, I would say. That's my thought.
Okay.
Is the hearing still open?
The hearing is open at this moment.
Still open, okay. If I could just, I mean, I'll stand up. Is there, well, I know we're not allowed to ask questions, but is there precedent for this? I mean, have we ever, has zoning ever approved somebody running this type of business in a neighborhood? I know I can't, I'm, I'm, all right, it's not a question, but I'm making that statement. And, and secondly, you know, I hope your business gets wildly successful and you can operate, yeah, I hope the business...
Ranging out of order.
Okay. I guess if, if it's a successful business, then it can be run off of a commercial location. That's all. And I think that's what we all feel like, and we wanna be good neighbors, but, but rent a lot. Rent a business.
We have a motion on the table.
It's time to vote, there's no more discussion on that.
All right. Discussion and a motion from the commission. Okay?
I don't have any discussion.
Okay, we'll vote.
We might still have people who wanna talk? Are we trying to close?
Well, we've got a motion to close the public hearing in a second. If we feel that we wanna keep it open, we should vote no. If we don't, vote yes. So we have to vote. So all those in favor closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
So it's one, two, three, four, to one. So the motion carries, the public hearing is closed. Who is four? Four, one against, I'm the against, the others are fours. Okay, public hearing is closed. All right, we're onto application 1838.
In the hall, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. I'll tell them to come back in. They can come back.
Okay, on application 1838, the text amendment. I believe that, that zoning gave us a favorable referral on this text amendment. Wait a minute, sorry. But I don't know.
Discussing, accepting, and is it?
Discussing, yeah. Accepting, and is it, is it modified?
Okay, here, it's good.
Okay, let's, we can talk about modifications. What would you like to see?
Yeah, please. I, I think it is broad, and I think that because it could affect other properties the way that it is worded, it would be something we should probably minimize, the additional wording, what we're going to change.
Okay.
Minimize it how?
Not make it apply to the AZ zone. We could do it specifically.
That makes it broader.
But if we do it to the AZ zone, that'd apply to other properties?
It applies to only other AZ zones.
Only other properties are butting AZ zones, which is pretty limited.
Pretty limited.
If you're comfortable.
Well, don't let it go with that. Robin gave the impression there's lots of AZ zones around Simsbury. That's what I thought she said.
Right.
I don't think we have that many.
But it's also qualified with the 250 feet.
It's qualified by the 250 feet, and we're only talking about a five-foot...
For this property.
It's not even...
By the, by the reg, the reg.
That's what I wanted to make sure was clear. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we have to disassociate it from the particular project.
Right.
Correct, exactly. Because this is gonna now be the verbiage.
Right.
Right. But it's five feet. It can lessen the setback by five feet.
Which we already done in...
In business, we're in business situations.
If it's a business zone against an AZ zone with the nearest AZ zone residence 250 feet away. I don't think there's many places in town where...
But Robin did make, it did seem like there were a few.
There are AZ zones, but I don't know that, there's that many.
With the two, with those specifics?
With those specifics, I bet there are no other ones, but that's a bad...
That was my only, that was my only concern.
So it sounds like you're happy with it the way it is?
I think happy's a...
Yeah, I'll give you Bruce. Bruce is not happy tonight.
No, but my, my concern is that, look at the size of that lot and the economics of developing here, you know, and the way our regulation reads. How is an owner, be it Mr. Evans or somebody later, gonna develop that property without some kind of accommodation?
Correct, yep, that's fair.
My preference would be to provide an accommodation under the existing regulations, whatever they are, rather than finding new interpretations and some text amendments and stuff. We're already down the path, I guess, of, we're gonna do a text amendment here. But I, I realize, once again, I just wanna make sure I'm clear about this. I support the idea of making accommodation, accommodation on this issue for Mr. Evans or later owner, so it's just a matter of what's the simplest...
The only thing that's missing is the, so in the, the other reg, when we provide for five-foot relief, we require additional screening.
Additional landscaping.
Right. So I'm wondering if that might be a good addition...
Yeah.
To be consistent.
I think that's good.
That would be the only thing I would say.
If you guys, so obviously I came in mid-conversation, if you guys wanna just recap, are you looking to change the wording that was proposed in the text amendment at this point a little bit?
We're considering that, and we've come down to, I think, that we're okay with it. We're not happy, we're okay with it.
How broad is it?
And that we could, a suggestion was made to add screening as a requirement of the relief.
So let me ask you this, do you guys think it's too broad?
Yes.
You think it's...
But then I was told there's not, it does not apply to that many other properties.
Probably not. I mean, it, it could apply to at least one or two others, but it's, first of all, it's just a side yard.
Yep.
One way you could, you could word it, I mean, it's kind of worded, does not apply. You could word it in a more positive manner and put business-owned properties adjacent to an AZ-zoned property where the closest dwelling, if you guys wanna keep the dwelling thing in there, on the AZ-zone properties at least 250 feet away from the business-owned properties, nearest property line shall, or may be reduced, the side yard parking may be reduced by five feet and require additional landscaping, and then it keeps it consistent with the language you currently have. So it would mirror it, but it would take the negative out of it, in that it would say does not apply, and just kinda make it a positive statement.
And then mirror the additional requirement.
And mirror the additional requirement. You could do it that way.
Bruce, I'm happier with that. I don't know about you.
Bruce, what were you looking for?
I, I wanna just go back to the thing about the number of AZ-zoned properties in Simsbury relative to the 250 feet. In my understanding, there's only one that's gonna qualify, although there are...
That I can't answer off the top of my head, so...
I don't understand, then, how that number came out of the air.
It didn't.
They measured from the property line...
I will tell you that that measurement is very specific to this property.
They measured it.
We would have to take a really hard look at the other ones, but the intent, I know that when Mike was working on this and he sent it over to see to look at it, the intent was we didn't want it to be able to apply just to that property.
Well, I guess the one thought that I would just add is that instead of saying that the requirement does not apply, and you could still tinker with that wording, I, I think I'd feel comfortable if it said, "That requirement may be waived by the zoning commission."
Yeah.
So you can't waive...
No, that's spot zoning.
That's right.
It's not, it's, it's a court case. We won't get into the semantics of it, 'cause then I'll just confuse the issue, but you, you can't waive it unless you have standards that go along with that, which we don't have, which would be a whole different text amendment, and you probably don't wanna go there. So this is, we tried to stay away from the waiving issue.
Let me back up. You had proposed a positive statement...
Yep, taking out the first.
Yeah.
And Jackie thought it was good.
Yes.
Yeah, what was it?
You would take out, "This additional setback requirement does not apply." So the start of the sentence is business-zoned property adjacent to, so you leave that line, and then you add, "may be reduced by five feet and requires additional landscaping."
And may require...
Oh, sorry.
Well, I think if you wanna keep it consistent with the language, it is required.
Okay, then it requires, okay. Somebody wanna make a motion to that effect before we change?
I would make a motion to accept or approve this text amendment as we're making the change.
To be effective?
Today?
No.
You can't.
You need...
It's normally effective after the date of, of legal notice, which I can't tell you when that legal notice would be, but for a safe bet, you can say 10 days out.
You can go beginning of next month.
Say first of November.
11-1?
Two weeks. Let's do two weeks out.
Twenty days, but that's, I'm just talking to, that's the commission.
We're only talking two days difference between November 1st and two weeks out, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So November 1st.
That's fine.
Okay.
So I make that a motion, and it would be effective November 1st.
I'll second it.
Second, bye.
Can you read back it?
Yeah, how about we...
I'm happy to. The proposed is the original wording, parking spaces in circulation, with the addition of business-zoned property adjacent to an AZ-zoned property where the closest dwelling on the AZ-zone property is at least 250 feet away from the business-zone property's nearest property line, may be reduced by five feet, and requires additional landscaping.
Why wouldn't you mimic the other paragraph that says the zoning commission may reduce the side parking setback by five feet and require additional landscaping if the business-owned property is adjacent to an AZ-zone property, or the closest dwelling? So use the same sentence, just change, the other one is for residential, and this one's for business.
And that's more clear cut.
You're gonna have to do that and make the motion.
Kevin, I think you got the answer.
Go ahead, Kevin.
All right, so I would change the proposal to, to delete what's in the italic system and say, "The zoning commission may reduce the side parking setback by five feet and require additional landscaping for business-zone property adjacent to an AZ-zone property where the closest dwelling on the AZ property is at least 250 feet from the business-zone property's nearest property line."
I'll second.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nice.
Okay, six, six nothing, it passed.
Good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure the clerk got it.
Mr. Chairman, just so we're clear for recording secretary, 'cause I have seven of you sitting at the table, what six of you are voting members tonight?
Appointed members, the alternate does not vote.
Okay. Make them sure.
He is seating for Mike.
Yes.
Next application, 1849, Christopher J. Smith, for a special exception for a liquor permit on the property located at 132 Hotmout Street. Comments on that?
No, but I can't resist sharing an observation. I think the reason that Simsbury is not at the, we're too short of the maximum number. There used to be two more liquor stores in Terrifield that aren't there anymore. And so, we used to have more, actually, at one time, I think they had four.
Terrifield had four, right?
Yeah, we did.
But they all took up abstinence.
Well, they were, Bloomfield and Grandy were right town, so...
Okay. Anybody have an objection or comments about this? And have a motion? Anyone wanna make a motion?
Which one do we do, 1849?
Skip 46.
18...
49.
49, for a liquor permit. Forty-nine, for liquor permit.
I'm just trying to figure out the mechanics tonight, because we still have an open hearing, so which one are we going to leave open, just the eighteen?
Just the eighteen fifty.
Fifty-one?
No, fifty-six is the permeable.
Fifty-six is the one.
Eighteen fifty-six is open, yeah.
So we have.
But I'm wondering, the specific to the site thing, should, should we not leave that and do it all at once? The, the amendment is generic, it doesn't apply to the property. But the others apply to the property, and I'm just waiting, do we wait till we get the final questions answered on the site plan?
All three in the same meeting.
What if it's a site?
It doesn't hold up the application anymore by doing that, and I just think we'd, I'd rather have the whole package rather than vote separately on each of these pieces. All right, then I will make a motion to table, application eighteen forty-nine, until our next meeting.
Second.
Second, my Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I make a motion to table, application eighteen fifty, until our next meeting.
Fifty-six.
Nope, fifty's the next one, it's the site plan.
Oh, fifty, I'm sorry.
Yeah, fifty, we didn't even address that today.
Right.
But I don't think we want to start now.
So we didn't open the public hearing for that one?
It doesn't need a, it's a site.
Oh, right. The site plan. Holding that open.
And that will give us the opportunity when we actually discuss that one to talk about whether there has to be additional landscaping around the garbage and whatever.
Someone second that one?
I second it.
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Application's table unanimously. Eighteen fifty-six.
Are we jumping?
Yeah.
Well, should we just keep going down, and then our motion's table fifty, well, fifty-one?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one and fifty-two public hearings in November.
Right, so they're always scheduled, so they're.
Already scheduled.
Eighteen fifty-six, we need to keep tabling that.
We will table that, table application eighteen fifty-three.
Wait a minute, eighteen fifty-three.
Yeah, we're going down the list.
These guys need to leave the room again?
In order to table it, I don't think so.
Why are we doing?
Because we're not ready to.
It's still open.
It's not open.
No, it's not open.
Oh, no, it's not. I don't need to go if you're, are you taking action on it tonight?
You can or you can't?
We can take action, everybody.
Well, I just need to recuse myself if you are, that's all.
Yeah.
We were in a, in a run of tabling.
It's going to be pretty quick, right?
You guys are all.
You guys are all done.
Thank you very much. Quick piece of tribute, do you know why there's four packets for us in Terafield? I believe the, I believe that East Granby and Bloomfield were both dry towns.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll follow up with your extensions.
Century was too.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Have fun in the morning.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Okay, I think let's table Salido's.
I could deal with that.
The next time, because that still gives them an opportunity to.
Come back.
Come back and.
No, we can't.
You can't say anything, but they can talk to the staff.
But I can't introduce any new information, so what you have in your record and what's in the file is the only information you guys can, you can ask questions of me as far as what's in the file, but you can't take in any other information, including myself.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about it real quick?
Well, okay, then I will make a motion that we approve application eighteen fifty-three.
Okay, I gotta recuse myself, sorry.
Okay, they have a second?
What, I didn't hear what you were doing.
I think you make the positive motion so that you then both know.
Right.
Is there a second, and then there's discussion?
Yes. So we need a second.
Second, I'll second.
Okay, who's second?
We're second.
Garrett?
All three of them seconded it.
Well, three of them seconded, take the closest, Garrett. All right. Okay, now we're ready to.
Yeah, and I would suggest that we vote against, I would vote against this.
Yeah, as much as I like to, you know, support businesses in the home, this is not one of them.
One of the three trucks is a steak rack. Yeah, I think that was.
I think that, you know, well, I'm persuaded by the evidence that they're very, you know, caring folks, and she's a wonderful volunteer and has a positive impact on the community and a family that we'd like to have in Simsbury, but I'm not, I can't support having a construct, you know, landscaping, construction business out of the home up there. I grew up in that neighborhood, I mean, you know, I used to deliver the newspaper over to that house when I was a kid, and my brother. No, it's not consistent with the character of the neighborhood. I'm very sympathetic to people who are afraid, especially seniors, about selling their house into a situation that's detrimental like that to me. I'm not going to support it.
And it is an R-15 zone. I mean, I have a neighbor that has it, but they own a farm.
Well, I have a neighbor that has a single truck. It parks at his driveway, and it doesn't bother me. This is successful.
You guys are already made of your mind, Garrett?
I agree. Can we come in?
Okay.
Sure.
All right. All right, all in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So it's denied zero to five. Motion fails, and a vote zero to five. Okay?
Thank you. Thanks for your service.
Which one did we miss?
Fifteen eighteen fifty-five.
Fifty-six, fifty-five. What's fifty-five?
Site plan amendment, we have to.
Do you have anything?
Didn't we do that?
I'm not familiar with this application at all, but.
It's the public library. No, they didn't have something done last time.
So Mike does have a.
Recommends approval.
Was it approved or not?
No.
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 Thank you.
Mike has a staff report in here. Apparently it did get a favorable referral from DRB. There is a plan in here for you guys, there's some pictures, and Mike did do a motion, if you guys so choose to approve, attached to his memo for you.
Where is that?
Yeah, I don't have a copy of that.
It's on the back of the document.
Eighteen fifty-five? Oh, you guys don't have a copy?
No.
No, he had a print.
No, we're on that website.
For eighteen.
Oh, you did?
Oh.
Oh, I don't remember.
That's okay.
Yeah, so it should, it's kind of in the middle of your.
I have the motion.
All right, well, you make the motion.
Please make the motion. Mr. Chairman, we approved application eighteen fifty-five for a site plan for the installation of a brick screening wall for a standby generator on the property located at 725 Hot Meadow Street. The site plan amendment approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. Number one, an administrative zoning compliance permit is required for the work. Item two, onsite pre-construction meeting with zoning enforcement is required prior to start of the site work. End of motion.
I'll second it.
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's six nothing.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a clarification on the motion that was still effective? The one that I took over for you was still effective, eleven.
The text?
Yeah, the text amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's still effective, eleven one?
Yeah.
Just to make sure everyone understands that, because it wasn't clear. Whoever made the motion.
Eighteen fifty-six is to be tabled, right?
Yep.
Yes.
The motion to table it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table application eighteen fifty-six until our next meeting on November nineteenth.
I'll second it.
Second by Donna, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's six nothing. Okay, and that ends the list.
We see the new application.
So you guys have two applications, just want to make sure you're okay with the scheduling of the public hearings for the date that staff chose, so the first one would be for your November meeting, and the second one would be for the December meeting. And that's because the second one needs a referral to the planning commission.
Okay, so we need to make a motion.
You do not need to necessarily vote on it, as long as you guys are okay with those dates, those are the ones that we'll put forth for the notice.
And I would like to speed that whole process up so that we don't have to vote on it in the future, because we were getting very bogged down on.
You guys are good with that, that's fine.
That's fine, although.
Well, just a quick question, Robin, is eighteen fifty-eight, is that on the way through planning, or that's not going to planning?
Eighteen fifty-eight.
Does it go to planning?
For the zone change, does have to go to planning, and I do not know the answer to that off the top of my head, because I don't attend those meetings, but I can double check with Mike and find out. All zone changes have to go to planning for referrals, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's, I'm assuming that he already did it, but didn't make a note on it.
Okay. All right, we are getting close to the end. We have a, Robin has prepared some statements for.
I think Mike put something in your packets that we were kind of drafting for short-term rentals, but Dave and I met this morning, and I thought maybe the first place to really start for short-term rentals is a decision from you guys as a board as to how you want to handle short-term rentals.
Who's due?
And there's three, kind of, well, there's technically four, I suppose, but three options for you to consider, and you do not have to make a decision tonight. But I thought this is a good starting point before we start getting in deep in drafting a regulation or a policy that really you guys should decide how you want to handle them.
The hope was that we would hand this out, we could read it, and in November meeting we could decide.
Talked about.
Yeah.
How we want to handle it, but.
And you guys can feel free, if you want to talk to staff one-on-one and kind of brainstorm with us, please feel free to give us a call or come in. We're happy to talk with you guys one-on-one about the different options. Option four I didn't put on here, option four would be just, you guys don't want them in town at all, which doesn't sound like the way you guys have been leaning in the past when we've talked about it, so I didn't put option four on there, but that is always an option, is that you want them to be prohibited. So I wasn't pushing you towards not thinking of that option, but.
We had two, oh, three B and Bs. How were they approved in the past?
So the traditional bed and breakfasts that we have were done as home occupations.
As home occupations.
They were.
And the inference there is that the operator is on the premises when the.
Yes.
Thing is going.
Yes.
So it seemed to me since we started talking about this, one of the things we need in our regulation is a requirement that the property owner be there when the renter is, when the property's rented.
Well, not necessarily.
That eliminates one of the types of.
Which is the whole.
The exchange, house exchange thing.
I'm not sure that needs to.
I don't think you really want to do that, if you think about it, and let's discuss that in another meeting. It's ten twenty-five.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Second by Donna, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Bruce and Barry.